We can hear you.
Good, okay.
Board members go.
Justice Ray Fowler.
Thank you.
Jamie Carey.
Thanks Dee.
Ed Franklin.
Ed Franklin, thank you very much. And joining us is, oh Superintendent Wall, you get to introduce yourself with big fanfare.
Good afternoon, welcome aboard.
That's all we get out of the superintendent. I mean, I figure, you know, all right, well, all right. And joining us is Mrs. Lynn Hop, Ms. Lynn Hoffman as well. She's the executive assistant to the board and superintendent. And again, welcome board members. We will begin this work-study session. We got a lot, lot, a lot of good stuff to hear. And a couple of good conversational pieces too. So let's go ahead and start off with the presentation. And it's an attendance study by Praveen Dubey. And I hope I didn't kill that name too badly. But welcome, welcome to the school board. We're anxious to hear all of this great stuff that you're going to bring to us.
All right, can you see my presentation?
Yes.
All right, good afternoon. Board President, Mr. Kendelia. Board members and let me take this out. And Superintendent Wallen. I'm here to present to you this study that I started thinking about way back in November two thousand nineteen. Because during my PhD program, I was like doing all the other studies about teacher retention and other things. But then I thought about doing something related to student achievement or test scores or something. So this was the one that that came to my attention. So I thought I should study and see what kind of patterns we have throughout the country. So I'm here to present to you that work. So the first slide that we will go and talk about is attendance facts. So the very first thing that if we talk about the attendance, the attendance is a fixed rate like raise, family income, et cetera. There was a research work done in two thousand and fourteen. So most times we think like attendance is one of the only factor like, like it's one of the factors that can predict the academic achievement, but this is not the only factor. During the research, I couldn't encounter any research connection between the student attendance and a school improvement. So I tried to do some other research from other researchers, but there was nothing that connects their attendance with their school improvement. According to a data published by US Department of Education National Center for Education Statistics. They say that missed day is a last opportunity for students learning and is important factor for the student achievement. In two thousand and fifteen sixteen school year, according to Office of Civil Rights, US Department of Education, there were eight million students were absent throughout the school year fifteen sixteen. And like when we go to the data of Arizona, you'll be surprised and shocked to see like how we are doing as a state. So and our numbers are really high. That's what State Department says. Every Student Succeed Act two thousand and fifteen has assigned the states the the responsibility to create an accountability system and implement that responsibility so that the local school districts can implement a system where they can see how the things are working in their school district. The next slide is about twenty-five percent of student Native American students are chronically absent nation-wise. And this is the study done by Brookings. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can ask me. Yeah. Yeah, you can ask me whenever you.
Again, I'm thank you for taking the question. And if you'll allow us, just when we see something to kind of, and I'm sorry, I'll say interrupt you. So but on the first page, you number two, no, item number two, attendance is one of the predicates of students' student achievement. And they say no connection between student attendance and school improvement. Are those two things oppose each other?
Yeah, so there was a connection between if the students are coming to school, it's one of the indicator, not like there are a lot of other factors. But there was no connection between student attendance and their school improvement. The researcher couldn't find any connection between attendance and the school improvement. But there was a connection between attendance and student achievement. So we talking about like two different things. Is school improvement is one factor and the student achievement is different. Attendance is related to achievement, but not directly related to improvement, school improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So my third point is the teachers' preparedness for class, high expectation and system of accountability are the most influencing factor for the student achievement. This is a research done by Martin in two thousand and nineteen. This is a lot published last year in one of the Research General for Education. The next bullet point is some individual teachers can have hugely different effect on the students' attendance in same way as test scores. So like if a teacher has an influence on the student, then that teacher can influence the test score in in a double digit. That's what it means. The next point is the teachers, teachers affect student attendance as well as student behavior and social, social emotional skills. So there's a relation between the student attendance and how teachers can affect their behavior and social emotional skills. The importance of teacher in case low K twelve classroom is already established. But the characteristics of the teacher quality is highly debated among the researchers. So what does that mean is like, we can talk about like this is a good teacher, but there's no set definition, what a good teacher look like in a classroom. Because like maybe somebody can argue that just putting a learning objective or doing something else can help students to achieve that goal. But there was no direct connection with being like what qualities are better than others. Chronic absentee is in early grade can add up to weaker reading skills, higher rate of attention, retention and lower attendance rates in lower grades. This was a study done in two thousand and sixteen. A school, according to the data published by researcher says that a school attendance is a critical for a student, American students. Because the purpose of the attendance is to improve the student achievement. So students need to attend this school. The last point on this slide is researchers tend to be attendance as useful tool for predicting how a child might do academically. But they don't see it as a tool for improving schools. So attendance is not one of the tools where we can argue that it will improve the the school's achievement. But of course, it's related to the student achievement, directly related to the student achievement. There are some facts about Arizona. K twelve education is the largest part of state's budget. The state spends approximately four point two billion dollars of its overall state budget, which is like nine point eight billion dollars for K twelve education. So as you can see, almost forty-seven percent state's budget is spent on the education alone. Experts suggest that poor teacher pay and low education funding are among the primary causes for the teacher shortage, which tends, which leads to other issues such as attendance, graduation, student achievement. So for this one, I wanted to quote a researcher, but then there were more than one researcher. So I didn't want to make other people like if somebody was watching like I'm taking one over the other one. So I thought I'm not going to do that. I might tell them this is mine, but that's not mine. Just to make sure.
Politically correct. I understand how you're doing right now, so.
Yeah, in two thousand and fourteen, as you can see, Arizona is like the fortieth state in terms of student, the teacher salary and as well as the part of people spending, which is was seven thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars as compared to eleven thousand and sixty-six dollars. There's some salary increase in Arizona in last few years, but then other states also increase the salaries. So the gap is pretty much still there. The state of Arizona is the third highest state for chronic absent. And the last bullet is three million students are missing, three million days of school days is missing in Arizona. So if you remember from the last slide, the entire nation has eight million and we have a three million, which is three over eight, which is like thirty-seven point five percent of overall chronic absenteeism. It's a huge number. And the next slide talks about how the these data is related to the data published by Arizona Department of Education for two thousand and nineteen, a school year, eighteen nineteen school year in terms of chronic absenteeism. And if you look closely at that data, you will see that I did not put these lines before, but while I was talking to Mr. Wallen, he said, if you put like eighty percent and ninety percent, then it's easy to see. So if you look at the first red vertical line, that is eighty percent. And then the second one is ninety percent. And if you look at the state, only group, only group that race was that did better in attendance, that was close to like ninety-four, ninety-five percent was the Asian American. Every other race and ethnicity, they were below ninety percent. And if you look at the Native Americans, they were probably close to seventy-six percent. So if you put it in terms of numbers, like twenty-four percent of Native American students are chronically absent in the state of Arizona. And it's a concern for, you know, a lot of researchers. The next slide talks about the regions of student ten absence. So the very first thing is like, there's no single region that can researcher can point out like this is the only reason they are missing their schools. Some of the regions are like categorized in different categories. And the first category comes under personal characteristics. The second one is the family processes. And then the third one is a school factor, a school factors. And this was a research done by in nineteen ninety-eight. And there was one thing that was really like interesting when I was reading this. I found out that there was one researcher who did the similar type study, but the the population was more like students, Native American students in Montana, and they were like a lot of correlation between that study and this study. The next point is students who miss this school see the classroom as boring, irrelevant and waste of time. Because they, for some reason, they cannot connect what learn, what is going on inside the class and what they are experiencing. So like something is going in the class is one thing. And if somebody is experiencing something, that's a, that's a totally different thing. The student did not show positive relationship with their teachers as well as with other researcher, other students. So this researcher Anderson in two thousand and seventeen, he published a data where he talked about like how the kids who were close to their teachers, which is like a relation building with the teacher. They were more in classroom, like they were more, they had less absent than the kids who didn't have, students who didn't have direct relation or positive relationship with their teachers and peers. They were often suspended in the in the same research, he continued. And he said that the reason why they were suspended because they felt like a school environment is unsafe. So one thing I would like to point out that is cool, like if a student is suspended for one or the other reason. Any school suspension is doesn't have that negative effect than if some student is suspended OSS, like outside school suspension. So I believe like instead of a school suspending OSS, doing OSS. I think we should come up with some environment, a school should come up with an environment where they suspend the kid for some demeanor. But then at the same time, they are inside the school so that they can feel like they are the part of the system. Because as soon as they leave their school, there's no connection between student and and the school. So OSS out of school suspension has, doesn't have a very positive effect on students. So that's the one factor I wanted to point out, point out over here under school suspension. Student did not feel challenged academically in class. That's what he find out. And the last thing he had very interesting point, he mentioned that students could not work and go to school in a timely manner. And this is a factor that is related to, if you look at the second bullet point, personal characteristics and family processes. That's related to their own personal goal setting and then also related to family because sometimes families, they feel like school is not important or that's not the one thing that they're supposed to or should do. Now, the next slide talks about the students' attendance data here at Page Unified School District. I would like to thank Suzanne and Ms. Hoffman because I got this data from those two ladies. So thank you, guys. Because without that, I don't think my study was even near completing. So this is the data, as you can see the data. And one thing that really comes to the attention is like the average attend absent is close to ten percent throughout the school year. And if you average out, I have another slide where I average out all the attendance from the from the different school years for the different schools here within the district, you will see the the absent is like really high. So this is for the the Pase High School where across the board, attendance is over. In most cases, absent is like ten percent or more. Next slide is about the mention Misha. And one thing that is different about mention Misha than any other school is the kids, kids, students are already checked out, like they are already behind, so far behind. So the the data, the attendance data reflects that kind of trend. And maybe this is one of the personal characteristics they had, and that's why they are behind and they are going to alternative school or in that kind of setting. Next is slide is for the page middle school. In most cases, you will see it's over ten percent. The next one is the desert view is little bit better than other schools. And then Lakeview is the best school. So one thing was really interesting in all these slides is the, we start with a very low, if you look at the Pase High School. They started with a ten percent, nine percent and eleven percent and seven percent absent. But when you go through the school year, it goes all the way to seventeen percent in some school years. Same is true with the with the Pase Middle School, start with six or nine percent, but it goes all the way to thirteen percent, some school years are fourteen percent. The desert view starts at five and it stays around like nine and ten. And in most cases, it's around like eight or eight percent. And the lake view has the best attendance. And for some reason, their absent was absent rate was higher in December, January and February in comparison to other months like ten percent. And then other months, they are like seven or eight. And the possibility could be my like weather change or something, but I'm not sure about that. So I, you cannot quote me for that statement. The next slide talks about the preschool and preschool had like a pretty much the same range, thirteen, fourteen percent. The highest for some reason was fifty-eight percent during one school year, nine eighteen nineteen. Maybe something bad did go wrong. I'm not sure how, what happened over there. But overall, they have ten to twelve person attendance. And in some cases, absent is like thirty-eight to wow, forty percent around. This slide talks about the average for the school year. So if you look at the Pase High School, the absent rate for Pase High School is around eleven point four to twelve point six percent. And Mansum Mesa is in twenties, Pase Middle School is around ten percent range. Desert View and Lakeview is around seven to eight percent and preschool is around like ten percent. Other than like two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. For some reason, the absent rate is like really high during those school years. Any question for me about the school data? Yeah, so like if I yeah, so like for the for the middle school or for the preschool, if a student is like a three year, four year or even five year in some cases, they don't have any saying in that. So probably it's more like a family processes in those cases than anything else. So I'm not sure what parents are doing or thinking, but yeah.
I have a question for you. I've noticed in all of your graphs, it looks like more of our absence are in February for each of the school sites.
Yeah. So I, so in general, I feel like the absent for the February for most schools were a little higher than than other months for some reason. And I I'm not, I don't remember the top of my head like why people were absent. And I'm not sure if I have that data where I can point out like this is the reason why most students were absent. So I will look into the data and if I have an answer, I will definitely pass out that answer to to all the board members. So are my next slide is the purpose of study. So I was, I was trying to do the research that I can relate, directly relate. So the part of the framework is about the policy analysis. And the very first thing that I wanted to do is identify the problem. And there were four, in any given organization, there are four different perspectives that goes with. And I'm, I considered the two perspectives. One was the human capital. And I use the research work done by Gary Becker. He is one of the pioneer in in human capital. And he, in fact, he got a Nobel Prize for his work. So I use his research and then I also use the cultural capital from Boruie and Obubu's work just to relate how the human capital and a cultural capital can help students, schools to to create a system where students are valued and at the same time, they are academically getting ready for college or career or whatever the year goal is. The 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 research was based on the policy standpoint, but then I have one recommendation at the end. I was not planning to do the recommendation in my original PowerPoint, but then when I talked to Mr. Wallen, he asked me to do some recommendation. So thanks to Mr. Wallen. And I did pull out some of the research that I did and I created the last slide for the recommendation. The the idea of this research was not to evaluate the already existing programs. And for the research, whatever research I have used here for as a reference, I have used a large scale data set. So in most cases, the data was like over ten thousand, but in some cases, it was over close to several hundred thousand. So the data was a large scale. The reason why the large scale quantitative data is more reliable than other type of data like quantitative or mixed. And this is my personal opinion. I'm, some researcher can argue something else. The reason why? Because it's easy to replicate and then you can duplicate the research in the different scenarios. So and and the large scale data give you the good effect size and and also the addresses the larger population in in general. Is it a ten minute, twenty minute, right? Oh, okay.
You're not being buzzed off. You're good. Keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, we do that to all our guests. So that's it.
Thank you. The the quantitative study is, it was basically based on all the quantitative study. In one or two cases, I believe I use the qualitative study where they discuss with the teachers and the student. But then it's like for me, I'm a quantitative person and I see everything in terms of number. It's kind of hard for me to replicate something qualitative. It's if it's not, doesn't click my brain. So I did not consider that. But one or two points might be from those researches. So here, I'm not going to spend more time on this slide. This is talks about the Arizona Attendance statue. According to Arizona, there are a lot of different features that we have in Arizona, like appointing an attendance officer attending the school for a six to sixteen, refusal to go to school because of classroom attendance, classroom threat, property violation or something else. So all these ones are already there. There was one thing that really came to my attention that in Arizona, ARS, Arizona revised statute gives an authority for the school districts to to create their own policies that can stay within the limit of is like a ASBS, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Arizona Board for School a school board association. Yep, got it. Yeah. So in most cases, what a school districts in Arizona do, they adopt and they adopt and the policy and implement as it is because ASBA does most of the, you know, work for most of the schools, I guess. Our next one. So if you remember, I talked about the cultural theory and human capital theory, cultural capital and human capital. So first of all, I would like to go through the cultural capital and the cultural capital talks about this researcher, Blues, Blue Kowski and Ginsburg in nineteen ninety-five, they came up with an idea of motivation is inseparable from culture and intrinsic motivational framework. So they came up with a, the motivational framework where they talk about, when we talk about the motivation and there are two types of motivation, intrinsic and extrinsic. So motivation that stays longer is intrinsic motivation. And if you want students to be motivated to come to school, the school should be culturally responsive teaching. The school have to adopt something that students can relate to their daily life like not so, for example, in two thousand and seven, I used to work in Tuba City and there was this question in Ames. Talks about how the New York subway and kids going there and there. It's kind of hard for the students who's living in reservation to relate that question. So I think some parents, they objected and there's some change in the testing. So that was just a one big example, I guess. He talked about the four steps. So the first one is establish inclusion. The second one is develop positive attitude. Third one is enhance meaning. And then the last one is in gender competence. And it's right there. So I think if I go over, I will be over my timeframe. So I'm going to skip that. But if board members want me to give more detail about that, I can definitely come later and present that to the school board. The next one is a really awesome study done by Gay and Lanson Billings. And he basically came up with an idea like if you want a culturally relevant education, there are three pillars of the culturally relevant education. One is culturally responsive teaching, which is on the left side. In the middle, it's pedagogy. And the last one is education. And education is only complete if you have all the four pillars, all the three pillars. And of course, teacher is a part of those pillars, but like these pillars should be there. So the first one is where the teachers start. But then you can build in other things in addition to that. My next slide talks about how can we do the intervention? So the very first thing that came to my attention was phone calls from the principal. So the very first thing that came to my attention was phone calls from the principals and from the secretary. As a school district, the the most important thing for any school is student attendance. Because everything else is related to that. So I think. The the student attendance should be the priority for the school. And if the student is missing, we should approach in that way. They also talk about meeting with families and I will come, I will talk about in detail in other slides. The next one is home visit from a school personnel. The next point is a school monitor like meet with students weekly to go over. Student progress like check and connect and then attendant attending organized meetings in the community. Like here we have a chapter houses, we can create a token system for attending school on time. So what I I observe like in most places, I'm not talking just the school district here page in. Please High School where I'm also employee, but I'm talking about in general. When a student is absent, we talk about only the kids who are absent. We don't do anything for the kids who are already here. So if you want the students who are already here to feel valued, we also need to appreciate them. Or come up with some incentive. The other intervention was the create principal led task force at a school level. I got this one from the study done by NYC, New York. School district. So the next slide is talking about the examples. So the the last slide was about the intervention and then the next slide talks about. The success stories from the different parts of the country. And one is from the New York City and in two thousand and four, all the way to two thousand and nine and ten, they had a very. Like high chronic absenteeism. So they came up with a system. And the first pillar for the system was use weekly monitoring, meeting and data to monitor chronic absenteeism. The second thing that they did, the step two was. Organize resources, a school wide to end chronic absenteeism. And step three was personalize history intervention. And when I said when a student is absent or a present. We need to approach personally to those students. If I student is here every single day, Monday through Friday. We need to appreciate that student saying that, yep, good job, cats, you know, you did really good. So we need that kind of appreciation for those questions too. And the next step, the last step for their intervention was draw on community partnership to better connect with families. So this was the one study that was done by NYC and they implemented and they improved their attendance in their sub urban schools. Now the next slide is. An example from one of the research researchers from Harvard University. And I believe she is still in her PhD programs. She talked about how to provide like a connection with the family, connection between the family and the school. So this is one example, their study had a ten thousand nine hundred and fifty seven students. They participated throughout the tennis schools in different school districts. And they collected the data and their effect size was the difference between the effect size from NYC. Which was the last example and this one was only point two zero standard deviation. So whatever they did, they implemented certain examples, the one that you see over here. The effect size was very close. So the difference was only point two standard deviation. And it can be a manual error, you know, like the way you put in the data or record the data or clean the data. So there was no difference. So it's a very authentic study that they had over there. One example that I wanted to see if I have anywhere nearby school district. And this is a school from Arizona and I tried to call and talk to somebody. Whoever was in charge, but because of COVID nineteen, I couldn't get hold of anybody. But the the there was a news article in Arizona newspaper. They talked about the school district, they said, is school district, I saw. Boba Kuah very unified school district, I'm sure they will sue me for saying their name wrong. But they came up with a good idea. They had a dizzy certain things. So one thing that they did. They had a small battalion of employees who can drive students to school when they miss a bus. There's the one thing they did. Their attendance was twenty seven, absent was twenty seven or more. And they bring down to like six or seven. Laundry services, sometimes students don't go to school because they don't have a running water. The problem that we have here in our reservation, they had the similar type of problems in their reservations. So they provided like a laundry, you know, you bring your step, you wash it, somebody will wash it. You go home, you will collect all the, you know, clean clothes, you know. The last thing that they did, the sometimes the students, the older students don't did not go to school. Because the younger siblings has lies and other things, you know. So school provided the life cleaning to clean that. So we already know the problem here, like what kind of problems we have for the Arizona and for the school district. So here is the very first step that like how we can do the program evaluation. So the first thing that I was trying to see like if there's a problem, there should be a solution. Because it cannot be like only one school in Arizona is suffering from this kind of thing. So I looked at that and there's this nonprofit group, they call it attendance works. And they work closely with the New York school district. So. They have this template, this is a program evaluation, there are three tier model that they use. And then in two thousand and eighteen, they have corrected their model and they do the inverted three tier model. So then you every tier has some requirement and there's a manual there. And you know, you run your task force based on that manual, their research, their recommendation. So if you remember the slides that I said, there are four steps. You can fill in one of those steps, all the steps using that tablet here. And there is training and everything else that goes with that. This is what they recommend is for the student attendance. And if you look at the data of the the information over here. If we address the issue at the very bottom level, like a tier one level, the cost to maintain. The cost to maintain that is very minimal. Because students are coming and if something happens, you know, you can address that right there and then. But as soon as the pyramid goes up, it increases the cost for the school district. Human resource, cultural capital, like all the things added value for every step, every tier you go up. So that's another example. Here is. The tools that can help and I'm in no way I'm recommending that we should go move and change to these tools. But there are some tools, free attendance monitoring tools available out there. They call it a D A T T. I believe it's called a district attendance tracking tool. And S A T T is school attendance tracking tool. And we can use that tool or if we have something else, we can use that too. That's just one thing. The other thing is a provide a personalized early outreach. The personalized early outreach will not only identify the symptoms, but the root cause and the barriers. To attendance such as hunger, homelessness, health causes. Transportation issues and other family situations. So the two things really came to my attention and I was really. Like surprised to see what NYC is saying. I used to work in two city, in two city and then I moved to Chinley. And when at one point I I did go with one of the principals at elementary visit a student's house. And I saw the 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 way the the student was living is was really socking and. Like I I cried, that's like what I'm trying to say. So sometimes the attendance is not just because they don't want to come, there's some other issues out there. The the next one bullet point is targeted and focused intervention to improve attendance. And the attendance work has that tool. And the last one is community work as team, good student attendance starts with parents and we can. Recommend certain things for the parents. So this last slide I was talking about, I did not include in my presentation at first. But when I talked to Mr. Wall and last Thursday, he recommended me to do that. So I added this side. So the very first, and this is I believe is the last slide that I have and sorry for taking such a long time. So the very first thing is it's not a quick fix. We cannot fix in one day, it will take time. And in in most of the play, most of the places like what I have read, like research, it's a team effort. Like one person cannot be responsible for their student attendance. It had, everybody has to be taking some part of responsibility and taking an effort in that direction. So what can we do to fix, create a team effort? So the first thing that my recommendation is creating a two tier task force. So one task force is that this this will give the instruction to all the schools. And the second one and collaborate and tie with the school districts. And the second one should be the school led. So the school led team is really important. That should be. Done by the principal. So the principal should take that responsibility. Because in any of my research, I didn't find like any clerk is doing or any teacher is doing. That was a responsibility that principal took in NYC, New York School District or for that example, California or for Arizona. So they 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 took that kind of responsibility. So that's the first step. The second thing I would recommend to do the program evaluation, what do we have currently? And what we need to do based on the research model that we already have. The next thing is we need to create a strong community partnership, which is a focus group. And when I say the focus group, I mean, not just the one group of people doing that. It should be rotating focus group and people are equally participating in that focus group where they connect with the. Teachers, teachers like principals and like everybody is connecting and with the students and parents. I highly recommend to use a human capital and cultural capital, their four framework systematic and system. And there was one more, but these two are more effective in a school scenario. The next one I recommend you to use it a streamlined education program. And streamlining means like providing a culturally relevant education. Resource allocation. And then this is like really interesting. So the last two bullet point is especially the second last. I would recommend for school district to start two new programs. The America, which is from the US Department of Education, it's a government agency. And then the second one is G R O T C, Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. And the the question is like, how do we create a program that can sustain? So both the two programs have a unique features in those programs. So let's first talk about the America. America comes with. So America hires eighteen year or older student who just graduated from high school. So there are very different benefits for doing that. So the funding comes from the the you, the one federal agency. And then high schooler who finished the high school, he last year or a year before, they will work as a. Court member and they get a weekly paycheck through that funding. But and at the same time, they also get the scholarship for their services. They provide their services for two years and they get a scholarship so that they can go to college. So in a way, we are bringing more teacher resources, the student resources or parent resources here within the community. And at the same time, we are creating a job and also providing the scholarships. Because that is a main motivating factor for the students scholarship. It's a scholarship, you finish two year of services and you get a scholarship to finish your college. J R T C is also a student leadership program where not necessarily you have to go to military or air force or Navy or wherever. But you start as a leader and then you know, see the value of the education, the community and the family. And then you go from there and those two findings, I don't believe a school district has to. Spend anything from M N O budget or any already existing budget. We can write a proposal to D O D Department of Defense, I believe. And there's a Marine Corps like a division. And then we also can write for the N C N C S to get those fundings and start the program. But we need to prepare now so that if you want to start it, we can start next school year. And then to supervise this whole operation. We should have some director, either some existing person who is here within the school district. Or somebody else who can supervise the outreach policy, student leadership and as well as America or. String Leadership Program and a G R O T C program. So all the things together as a school district. So in not any single situation where I'm recommending to create an extra budget item. I'm just saying we should get more resources that is already out there and get those resources and bring it to our local community. And let students, teachers, everybody get help like in terms of scholarship, extra help and everything else that comes with that. And I believe I'm done. If you have any question. I'm good to go. God, someone's talking.
Board members.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So. I don't know, two thousand fifteen. So when I. No, it was more than two thousand beyond two thousand fifteen, but how how does PBIS play into all of this attendance?
I cannot answer that question because like I did not evaluate the program. So that's why I said. We if we want to see what is working, what is not working, we need to evaluate the district already existing program that we have. So I'm I'm not sure. I don't have a data for that. So if I have an access to the data, I can. Definitely, you know, run some scenarios and model and 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 give the the answer that. We are looking for.
Sounds good. And then I've seen, and I am kind of familiar with the AmeriCorps, which is amazing program. Many times that we have gone to Washington DC to the Hill Visit. It's just amazing to see multiple children from across the nation, ten. Hill visit themselves and advocate on their own behalf as students. And it's unique to see that type of advocacy, it's just from our young children. But I think that is also a great program that could definitely benefit our students here in the district. And same with the J R T P as well.
Yeah. I think the the reason why I recommended those two programs, because that doesn't add any budget constraint with the school district. It brings the revenue to the school district and then we can spend and we can use those American or, you know, as a tutor. As like whatever, you know, you come up with, you know, we can write the bylaws and and we can. Assign those American members to like help the school like the way we need, you know. So and all of them are eighteen or over. So they are an adult, so we can give them the responsibility of adults. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, but I don't remember for like I had run the American program. So they come with a fingerprinting card, so they can work with the students, this like. The safety concern is not there. They go through DPS, Department of Public Safety and we can ask them. We can write that in my bylaws for the school district saying that you have to have a fingerprinting card or security measure, you know, we can. We can do do those things. But the good thing is we are bringing more revenue to the school district. And we are helping the local kids like getting trained as a leader, as a student leader. And then also getting a scholarship. So it's a job as well as a scholarship and then also helping the local communities.
Board members.
Yeah, Bob, along that line, this is Dee.
Yeah.
Just looking at the recommendations on the systemic change under what was mentioned to America. R O T C. What I might add is we're in a very unique situation with the National Park Service. Would be along that line. Then the next item, creating a district leadership, we already have unity. Policies, procedures are written up that could be also utilized and networking with our young people.
Yes.
Yep, great point.
Yeah, good, good, good comment, Dee.
Yeah, I think the those things will, when we evaluate the program, that will come under the evaluation part like. Then we will say, okay, what is already existing in the? Like then we will say, okay, what is already existing in the district? So then, you know, then we will fit the pieces. It's like a puzzle, you know. Go back and then you start putting it together. And if it gives you the right picture, then why not, you know? You don't have to trash whatever is already there. We need to, you know, add, not reduce certain things from already existing program.
Bob, there is a question in the chat box. I don't know if you've seen that.
I haven't. I don't see my chat box. Oh, there it is. Hold on, I'm sorry. This is from Ryan Pelosi, and thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Does this include excused absences?
The attendance like data.
Yeah, I had put that question in there a while ago. It's not a big deal now, but I was just curious as to if those absences were included, if they were marked excused afterwards.
I cannot answer that question right now, but I can.
I can answer that question. The attendance data that we collect for the other dashboard includes all absences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Debe? I'll just say a couple of things. You've given us a good, kind of a good template to follow to start getting at this a little bit better. Man, your research is really impressive.
Thank you.
And some of the things that you've mentioned here, you've already done a little bit of the intervention pieces. We have a lot of those things that are going on. And to strengthen those and to again, do a full program evaluation. And if I gather kind of the building block of your presentation, two things, one is your curriculum's got to make sense to the kids. And a lot of it has to do with how the teachers are going to engage in the classroom. And what wasn't said there but is implied is the fact that it's, our jobs are relational. 100% to get involved, you know, when you went to the, when you went to the students' house in Tuba City. You know, those things are eye-opening for sure. And that's, that's a couple of the steps in terms of being involved with your students and what they have to face on a day-to-day basis. So. But program evaluation, I'm sure Superintendent Wallen, do you have any comments in terms of? Because I know you had said that this was really an impressive presentation. You've asked him to put together a recommendation sheet. And so I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but probably in some shape, form or fashion, the school board might expect, you know, maybe some action on some of these.
Well, I, yes, and I think that, that the issue, and he put down his recommendations is to create a systemic change. We have a lot of things going on out there with attendance. But we don't have it very well organized. We don't have a task force, a two-tiered task force. And then looking at the human and cultural capital. It's one of the best attendance presentations I've seen. I've been doing this for 35 years. If we really want to tackle attendance and create the best value for our students because of them coming to school. I think this is something that as I talked to him, Praveen, about is we need to operationalize this. Now, we have a little bit different scenario right now with the online learning. But when we go back to brick and mortar, and that gives us time to set up something like this, where we actually take a real strong target and move forward with this. It's well organized, it's well put together, it's got very clear benchmarks in it, clear ways to identify what we want in that pyramid. And Desiree asked a really good question about how does PBIS fit into this that we don't know. So that's where it should pull together all those pieces that we have into a concentrated effort to really make a difference in attendance. And so when I read this, that's what I was thinking, wow, this is real systemic change. This is something we need to jump on and move forward with, with our organization to improve our student attendance.
Can I just add to what you had to say, Mr. Wallens? One of the things that, some of the things that were mentioned was the home visits. But I believe that our district has a student support department, which, you know, we have staff members that are going and helping families out, making them visits. And the unique thing also about student support is they're able to do the students laundry as well too at the district site. So it's nice that we, our students have that type of support. So some of the things that, that were mentioned in the presentation, I feel like we are definitely on the right track and we are definitely looking at a good, I mean, looking at a good standard as far as how things are going and developing in the district. So I appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation.
And think about how powerful that would be if we had it all organized and really pushed out in terms of where we're going, so that we have a systemic, systemic piece. The part that's missing is in step one, is weekly meetings and data to monitor chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, sorry. We do that, but we do it haphazardly. We don't do that the same way we evaluate a common formative in the BT classroom as an example. This puts a whole new piece to that. And if you look in the district at the number of people we have involved with discipline and all those kinds of things. If you pull all those people together, you got a real strong task force there to really make a difference, not only in attendance. Because if you improve attendance, you improve learning, you improve behavior, you improve the results of going to college. So it's, it's really well put together and something I think we need to pursue. And I'll be working with him, Praveen, to move forward with that.
Thank you.
But it, board members, any other, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Candelaria?
Yes.
Can I just make a few comments?
Absolutely.
We've had, we have done data dashboards now for 12 years. And I would really recommend that we look at all our attendance trends. We have had years where attendance was well below, like where we've had only less than 5% of the kids seem to know what we did in those years when our attendance was high. And in the last few years, we have just steadily increased our attendance issues. So I would be interested to know, what did we do, you know, eight years ago that caused our attendance to be so much higher? Or what did we not do? I think that would be interesting. Because we've had better attendance before.
I would like to add one point, like so look at the theoretical perspective of the attendance. If the, throughout the school district, if the absent rate is 10%. And if I'm correct, the last year's school's attendance was two, we had 2,601 students enrolled in the school district from K through 12. And 10% attendance means you have a 260 students absent every single day. If you put in it in terms of economic terms, because I was talking to my professor and she just popped this thing in my mind like, okay, put a value, then it's more easy to, you know, replicate or easy to explain. So if you have a 260 student, and I'm speaking theoretically, and I don't think anybody's fault is in this, this whole thing. And if you divide that by 26, because average class size in Arizona is 26 to 30. You have a 10 teachers, theoretically speaking, 10 teachers don't have any student every single day. I'm not saying that these teachers don't have a student, they have a student. But theoretically speaking, they don't 10 teachers, they have school, like no student all year long. And if you look at in terms of economic impact, if your average salary is 40,000 or 50,000, you know, do the math, you know, 40 times what, you know. So I'm not saying that teachers don't have those students. But if a student is missing, we are wasting that resource. The, some school districts, they, so the one good thing that I saw this year, we have a technology that we can use to relate the student attendance and the learning. So that, like, so we can put the technology as like a forefront and help students using that technology, like creating a flipped classroom or, or, you know, something of that nature, you know, hybrid or flip classroom for math and English and, and science and other subjects. So they, and we are equipped with technology. That's, that's one of the things that, you know, I have seen this year. Like we have, we are highly enriched in terms of technology and every student has one-to-one. And there was one research that one of my peers is working on, the technology piece, that one recommendation that we wrote for DEA, Texas Education Agency, was the use of technology. So technology can make some of those achievement adjustments in terms of attendance as well as test scores.
Good. Excellent points. All right, any other questions, comments? Mr. Debe, thank you very much. Very diligent work.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to recommendations from Superintendent Wallen. And as we move forward, again, in the midst of everything that we've, where everybody's in a brand-new learning environment for everything that we're doing. But thank you so much for this.
Yeah, I would like to appreciate the school board president, Mr. Candelia, the school board members and Superintendent Mr. Wallen for this opportunity. I'm also a school employee, so that was very close to me, you know, in terms of doing the research that's related to where I am working. So thanks for the opportunity. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, item number B on our agenda, PSD Instructional Improvement Plan Presentation. Ms. Jeanne Wood.
Good afternoon. Can you see my screen?
It's up in living color. It's nice.
Thank you. Governing Board President Candelaria, Superintendent Wallen, governing board members. Good afternoon. Unlike Mr. Dubay's presentation where he gave very granular next steps in terms of attendance policies, my presentation will be a broad overview of the strategic planning process for continuous improvement at Page Unified School District. If any of you remember the 1990s movie Groundhog's Day, where the character woke up and was reliving the same day again and again. Many of the slides within this presentation, you will probably say I have seen before. And it is true that you have seen them before. But my purpose is to show the connectivity between this and also to show the link between funding sources, especially with some of the new needs that we have identified this year due to the COVID-19 situation. Continuous improvement. Continuous improvement is a process that unfolds progressively and is sustained over time. It encompasses the general belief that improvement doesn't start and stop. It requires an organizational and professional commitment to an ongoing process of learning, self-reflection, adaptation and growth. I want you to note the arrows and the position that they're moving. This is to show the alignment of our organizational values. And we need the arrows aligning and moving in the same direction for us to continue to do that. Again, this is a graphic that you've seen many times. And again, it shows the connection between our strategic plan or our vision, how our schools work on their school integrated action plans and how our district responds by authoring or writing the district integrated action plan. This also gives us funding mechanisms based on need for Title I. And I want you to again, note the arrows within this graphic. Unlike the graphic where it was showing the arrows all in the same direction, notice the flow in between the arrows and the connection for how things should work together. This graphic, I also want you to understand that we are mandated to follow this structure under ESSA or Every Student Succeed Acts. That's the federal law that drives this forward. Our Arizona State Board of Education formulates policies and our Arizona Department of Education provides further working guidance of how to implement these policies. And again, you'll notice the graphic at the bottom, this came from the Arizona Board of Education, Arizona Department of Education, and that's how we follow. So what is a vision statement? And if you take a look at the graphic, it shows, and as a young person, sometimes we write a vision board. And again, it shows us what we want to do in the future. It's meant to inspire and give direction. And a vision is aspiration. So sometimes taken out of context, that makes better sense. McDonald's vision is to move with velocity to drive profitable growth and become an even better McDonald's, serving more customers delicious food each day around the world. Another vision statement is from Starbucks. To establish as the premier purveyor of the finest coffee in the world while maintaining our uncompromising principles while we grow. Our PUSD vision. Page Unified School District is a community of learners who direct our collective attentions, actions and resources towards the unique learning needs of every child and order for all students to become college and career-ready and successful in global society. Again, this is an aspiration. It is a goal that is strongly desired. It is long-term by nature. It's futuristic. In comparison to a mission statement. A mission statement describes what an organization wants to do now. It's designed to convey a sense of why the organization exists. It gives purpose. It's the organization's reason for being. It's all about what is happening now. And a mission statement is actionable. Again, going back to outside context to make more sense. McDonald's mission is to be our customers' favorite place and way to eat and drink. Starbucks' mission is to inspire and nurture the human spirit. One person, one cup, one neighborhood at a time. Our PUSD mission. Our schools are passionate about the learning for all mission and understand that every student matters. We are responsible and accountable for the education of every student that walks through our doors every day. A recent change to that would be with our virtual learning, that we now say we are responsible for every student that walks through our doors every day in person or virtually. Again, this is actionable. It's something that we can do right now. Again, back to the large arrow from the graphic, the PUSD strategic plan or vision. Our strategic plan was written some four to five years ago with updates. And it provided basic strategic directions to us. Leadership, culture, systems and instruction. It also gave us seven strategic pillars. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail of this, but I'm going to read one data statement from our current strategic plan. To increase student achievement resulting in improvements for each school's learning gains, grade level proficiency rates, graduation rates and school grade designations of A, B or C. So how does this translate into data? This is longitudinal data over time with the PUSD results of A through F letter grade. Note that there's not a letter grade for school year 1920 because no test, no AZ Merit or AZM2 occurred to make the destination of A through F possible. And so schools, schools have been identified with whatever label they had in school year 1819 becomes their 1920 A through F letter grade. Now to break this down into more actionable information. The bridge between data and increased student achievement. There are six principles written within integrated action plans. Principle number one, effective leadership. Principle number two, effective teachers and instruction. Number three, effective organization of time. Principle four, effective curriculum. Principle five, conditions, climate and culture. And principle six, family and community engagement. These are the six principles that schools are asked to have a keen focus on to have systemic change occur. And they are asked to look at data, both leading and lagging data for the purpose of increased achievement of students. The big three of data literacy. Again, we need to look at both lag and lead data. Lag data are assessments and data analysis of learning. Data used to prove, in this case, A through F proves annual student progress. And again, it's a lag indicator data, lag indicator. The other side of that is assessments and data analysis for learning, formative assessments, CFAs. Data used to improve student instruction and data analysis using lead indicators. And in a healthy environment or system, we use both interchangeably. Here are some examples, and I'm going to take from the presentation that Mr. Dubay gave tonight. When we look at lag indicators and lead indicators, the assessment or the attendance data that he shared tonight, by nature, the five years of attendance data of attendance data is a lag indicator. It's nice for us to look at. It shows that we have an issue that we need to improve upon, that it doesn't give us actionable next steps of how to do that. Later in his presentation, for the lead indicators, when he spoke about the interventions and the weekly meetings to look at data in a different way, that would be a use of a lead indicator, lead indicator. For example, one of the questions asked was, is PBIS, and what does that, how does that impact our attendance data? Looking at the longitudinal data or the lag indicator, we would not be able to answer that question effectively. However, if we looked more closely at who are the students that are having these issues? Is it the same students? Is there a sickness, for example, going on? Perhaps one of those months in that five-year data, there was an illness that affected schools. We often lose some of those measures over time because we forget, quite frankly. But it's a lesson in looking at both to make more effective choices. Schools are tasked with writing school integrated action plans. They start at the top of the circle with a comprehensive needs assessment. Then they conduct a root cause analysis where they really get in and start asking critical questions about why isn't this working the way that we wanted to? Think about it, a root is in dirt, and in dirt, you're in the weeds. So, this is kind of the ugly part of the process, but it really is necessary because as educators, we sometimes want to jump to the solution set right away. And that's not often how we find the best solutions to the problem happening. We really do need to spend some time in that uncomfortable stage of unearthing all the possible reasons of why a certain initiative is not working the way we want to. Next, we're asked to research and select evidence-based practices, strategies, and interventions. Then, we're tasked with developing that integrated action plan. Then, we need to implement it. And we need to monitor along the way, and then we need to evaluate whether it worked or not. So, again, when we monitor, that's when we're looking at the lead indicator data. And when we evaluate, that's when we're looking at the lag indicator data. Everyone's favorite acronyms in education, CNA to RCA to IAP. Again, the needs assessment to the root cause analysis to the integrated action plan. And the most notable thing that I want you to take away from this slide is this statement right here. We identify strengths and needs in order to increase student achievement and strengthen school systems leading to sustainable improvement. The primary needs identified in the comprehensive needs assessment become the foundation of the school integrated action plan. The LEA integrated action plan is based on the school comprehensive needs assessment findings. It supports the implementation of the school integrated action plan. As a district, we do not conduct our own comprehensive needs assessment the way that our schools do. However, we look at the data compiled from what they have shared, and there could be other ways that we conduct other needs assessments or surveys to identify the truth in that, that that is the main difference between this process. I just want to briefly show you an example of what the comprehensive needs assessment looks like. And again, this would be a full-blown presentation in and of itself. But we call this, it's easy as pie when we were trained on this. So, it's the idea that for each principle, there is an indicator. That's the 2.1, 2.2, et cetera. And there's elements or further questions that break down the indicators as they go through. So, teams come together, and these teams consist of school site, leadership teams, teachers, parents, others coming in to truly examine and answer their current reality. So, one of the questions, for example, says 2.3. Based on available student data, teachers intentionally plan instruction that supports every student in meeting rigorous learning goals, including differentiated instruction and universal design for learning. As a team, they rank themselves, and they say, are we doing this or are we not doing this? And the comprehensive needs assessment tallies up the scores overall to show whether perhaps is areas that need refinement. The other nice part of this document is it gives an output section. It really makes us mindful of what are the students doing in this? What should this look like within the classroom? With the example that I just read, the output is students receive comprehensive lessons designed to meet the needs of all learners. So, if this is an area that they score a little lower on their needs assessment, then ultimately during their root cause analysis, they will start thinking about why aren't students receiving comprehensive lessons designed? Is it an issue with the curriculum? Is it something with our instruction? Is it something with the resources that we have available? Is it a lack of training? So, they're asked to really think through all of those things to think about what's causing the lower score there. Again, the LEA's responsibility is to show the trends across schools. So, this is the breakdown of the results of the school's comprehensive needs assessments. And again, I know these numbers aren't going to be very meaningful to you. But if you take a look here, note that every one of our schools, five out of five, indicated 2.3 as a primary need. Under principle number four, four out of our five schools identified 4.4 as a primary need. And under principle six, we had two school sites identify 6.1 as their primary need. So, what are those primary needs? So, one that I read for you, 2.3. The need for differentiated instruction and universal design for learning. 4.4, our written curricula accommodates the needs of all learners, including culturally relevant academic, behavioral, and social emotional learning components that meet the needs of the whole child. And 6.1, our school creates and maintains positive collaborative partnerships among families, communities, and schools to support student learning. Note that I have 6.1 highlighted. Every school, as a Title I school, is obligated to think about family and community engagement. It's important for us to build strong partnerships, to do this work together, and to really not only take the input of parents and stakeholders, but also invite them in to be part of the solution set to help go through our needs assessment, and for them to help us to better define what we can do better along the way. So, each school has family and community engagement set aside money. Again, that's written within the law for that. But for schools that identify this as a primary need, they write specific strategies and action steps within their integrated action plan to support this. So, our needs drive our actions. Within the school integrated action plan, after they've identified their needs, done their thorough root cause analysis, then they think about what are their desired outcomes. They write SMART goals, and then they develop strategies and action steps, including implementation action steps, monitoring action steps, and evaluation action steps. Again, the monitoring needs to come along the way. It's a checkpoint, and it needs to happen more frequently. The evaluation comes at the end. So, we think about holistically, did this program work? Did this intervention work? But we must monitor along the way. The district integrated action plan, again, examines trends across school sites. We prioritize support to ensure that we're giving them the right, the correct supports they need. But we too develop desired outcomes. We look at SMART goals across the district, and we develop strategies and action steps to help schools monitor and evaluate. In addition, we monitor and evaluate what they have written within their integrated action plan. We use this to help us prioritize our funding. Entitlement grants, Title I, Title II, and Title V are monies that all Title I schools receive. And again, they're given out annually based on free and reduced lunch count numbers, our participation in community eligibility provision. And then on top of that, if there's additional need, there's competitive grants that we go out for. Two of which we have successfully gone out for in the past are CSI grants and systemic leadership development grants. I'm going to break down this for you so you can show, so I can hope to highlight trends over time. Manson Mesa High School was identified as an F school in school year 1718. They were eligible to go out for comprehensive support and improvement monies. And we did, we were successful in that. For fiscal year 18, we received an allocation of $18,000. Our focus at the time, again, based on their needs assessment, was Edutainment PD. At the time, that was a shift in curriculum for those students. It was formerly A+, and they needed to learn what that looked like. Teachers needed to have a deep understanding of what that looked like. There was also an extensive amount of time spent on PBIS professional development for the same reason, a reexamination of how to motivate students to attend school, to do well in school, to think about school differently. And finally, money was set aside for curriculum work for teachers. The next year of that fiscal year 19, note that the allocation request went down substantially, $8,000. The reason for that is we like to think in two-year cycles, planning and implementation. Year one, it was professional development heavy. Teachers were learning what they needed to to implement the program. In year two, they still needed that PD, but they needed lesser time to interact with that. When they had those two things down, the curriculum piece and the PBIS part, now they were able to focus on their instruction. So, again, the monies went to a higher impact. Equity by Design PD, culturally relevant instruction, blended learning, and they visited alternate school sites to see what was working well for them. They also participated in PLC training and UDL implementation. Again, this year's allocation, less than half of that asked because now the professional development happened last year, and in this school year, it's the implementation of that learning. So, with that happening, with that all going on, we knew that it was successful because Manson Mesa High School moved from an F to an Alt-C on their A through F letter grade. They were able to do that because of the extra support they received from school support and improvement. ADE, when you are identified as an F school, comes and offers different supports to you, including onsite visits to show what you're doing. And they also do desktop monitoring visits as well. We've been very lucky, we've gone through a couple of different specialists, but we've had very good relationships with all of them. Our current specialist really does a nice job of working with us continually when we need her support, and we appreciate that. But the school support and improvement theory of action is simply this. They provide additional training for schools to look at the continuous improvement process and implementation so that school sites can implement necessary systems change with evidence-based practices throughout the continuous improvement cycle so that equitable, strength-based LEAs in schools can increase system and individual capacity, ensuring equity, excellence, and innovation resulting in increased student outcomes so that all Arizona students are empowered to create limitless futures. So, that really was something that we were able to stand behind, and we really wanted the opportunity for all schools within our district to receive that same level of support given to Manson Mesa High School. Therefore, the decision was made to apply for the Systemic Leadership Development Grant, otherwise known as Project Elevate. When we applied for this, it was competitive in nature. It's a two-year commitment, again, with the focus of concentration on looking at our integrated action planning in a different way to make sustainable change. I know this graphic is hard to read, but Project Elevate has three main levers that they concentrate on. Lever one is talent management, lever two is culture, and level three is instructional infrastructure. I also like the results provided. Forty-three percent of districts and schools that participated showed gains in proficiency between five, I'm sorry, between 10 and 25%. Fifty-four percent of participants showed gains between 5 and 9%. The long-term goal of Project Elevate is to improve equity-focused leadership competencies, to improve teacher practices, to achieve significant gains in student achievement, to reduce achievement gaps between student subgroups, and sustain highly effective equitable LEA and school systems. The bonus is, we also have access to not only our improvement specialists from the state, but we have been given a Project Elevate coach, Melinda, who works one-on-one with our building principals and their teams, and with us at the district level as well, to think about how we're implementing these processes. So, the numbers that I gave you in terms of the gains are pretty substantial. How was that even possible? When we were first exposed to the idea of the 90-day plan, other participants really said this was the game changer for their school districts. They said there were things that were just not working. They had people working hard, but it just wasn't translating into success until they started the 90-day plan. The 90-day plan really forces our sites to chunk information into 90-day blocks. It makes the tasks broken down. And most importantly, it allows us to focus on identification of quick wins. We have to look carefully at what are we doing well? How can we do more of that? It's strength-based competencies. We're building teams that encourage and support one another by learning how to share the load more effectively. The 90-day plan also comes from the work of Covey. And he talks about the idea of a cylinder glass. And if you had a glass cylinder, and the glass cylinder was everything that you do in a working day, and you were asked to fill it, and next to the cylinder are rocks, gravel, sand, and a glass of water. The rock represents your main priorities. The gravel is your day-to-day responsibilities. The sand is the interruptions, and the water is everything else that happens during the day. If you, as most people do, pour the water in first, the sand in second, the gravel in third, and the rocks in last, the rocks will fit, and that's our typical workday. However, if we do the reverse of that, and we prioritize on the big stuff, if we put the rocks in first, next we add the gravel, then we add the sand, and finally, we pour the water in, everything fits in the glass cylinder perfectly. Therefore, if you work first on the biggest priorities, i.e. your rocks, everything else falls into place. I share with you this graphic because during the time of this two-year commitment, last May, our teams were to be trained on the 90-day plan development. At that time, they had written their integrated action plans, and the training for the 90-day plan was coming. However, with COVID-19, a whole new set of priorities arose, and that training was delayed. This shows some of the new needs that were identified. Immediate needs, ensuring our students were fed, ensuring that students were connected to Wi-Fi, ensuring students are safe, keeping students engaged in distance learning, and preparing to reopen our schools. Ongoing needs include a designing and delivering an instruction that is flexible across in-person and remote formats, reverse COVID-19-caused learning loss, provide scalable support for growing mental health needs, and to prevent teacher burnout during broad change and uncertainty. However, this graphic helps us to break down the same way that the 90-day plan helps us to prioritize differently. However, this graphic helps us to break down the same way that the ninety-day plan helps us to prioritize differently. Our most impactful investments currently will be to improve the district's capability to proactively identify individual student need. To improve accessibility of differentiated instruction and support services during both in-person and virtual situations. And finally, the need to simplify the complex array of new processes, procedures and platforms. Necessary to operate a flexible school system. And we're asked to reflect on this question. Instead of wishing a crisis away, world-class leaders lean in and ask which organizational changes should we prioritize? And this is a question that we have asked ourselves over and over again. And are continuing to ask ourselves this because of the changing landscape of education right now. However, if we think back to our identified PUSD big rocks. These are our big rocks for this year. Number one, a focus on curriculum and instruction framework. Including the processes that we're already doing within our PLCs. Our beyond textbooks framework, our Avid system and universal design for learning. Again, remember, UDL two point three was an identified need by five out of five of our school sites. Therefore, within Title Two, an increased learning of UDL is happening to further support school sites with that. And number two, we also commit to a focus on data-driven instruction. And as identified earlier, these aren't just academic measures that we've committed to looking at differently. When we think about data-driven instruction, we are also currently looking at number of meals delivered to students on a daily basis. What are the social emotional needs of our students? What are the number of hotspots that we're providing to our students and are we meeting that need? And again, by concentrating on these big rocks. It helps us to better prioritize our efforts to ensure we are meeting the PUSD mission. Of our schools are passionate about the learning for all mission and understand every student matters. We are responsible and accountable for the education of every student that walks through our doors every day. I'm going to end where I started. And looking at this, but I also want to share with you that there are offshoots of the plan as well. So when we think about schools writing their integrated action plan. At the elementary schools, they also were writing a more literacy plan, a move on when reading literacy plan. At the high school, they are looking at data through the college and career readiness index. Within our own district, we have been asked this summer to develop the continuous learning plan. That then morphed into our distant distance learning plan. And our mitigation plan, our re-entry plan for schools. So within the circle between school and LEA, there's additional needs that we have been prioritizing in a different way. I didn't share the last slide with you to talk further than what I did in terms of entitlement funding and competitive funding. But the other layer of support that we have when we think about COVID nineteen is CARES Act money, Esser money. Just under five hundred thousand that our district received FEMA money, enrollment stability grant money. This afternoon, Superintendent Wallen, Vindi and myself all participated in a webinar. That broke that information down differently. So those are all considerations that we're making now as well and prioritizing those needs differently. But I want to leave us with a little hope and encouragement. So I'm going to read a quote from Simon Sinek, a guru in the field of us understanding. How we can look at things a little differently. We remind ourselves of our values by writing them on a wall as nouns, integrity, honesty, innovation, communication, for example. That nouns are not actionable, they are things. You can't build systems or develop innovations around those things. It's nearly impossible to hold people accountable to nouns. For values or guiding principles to be truly effective, they have to be verbs. It's not innovation, it's look at the problem from a different angle. He continues that one of his nouns he formally wrote was leadership. And I really liked that idea because leadership was within our strategic direction. Leadership is principle number one within our integrated action plan, effective leadership. It's also one of the premises of Project Elevate, equity-focused leadership. And according to Simon Sinek, instead of saying, I believe in leadership, he changed that slightly to read. I lead with integrity, I promote gratitude and I never stop learning. Those are the types of things as we move forward that will help us to prioritize our needs better. And to ensure that we are in alignment with creating values, organizational values that we can all stand behind. What questions do you have?
Board members, you're up. Questions, comments? I'll just, I'll just, I'm going to ask a question and because we've talked about this a lot. And it has to do with literally your, your big rocks, the curriculum. And instruction framework and data-driven instruction. In this present environment, the COVID environment, I know things are different, but that doesn't change those two boulders that we face, right? And so my question is, are we instituting this systemically from K to twelve?
We are.
Okay.
We are. And we are going to be pushing this out so that it's a continual focus of looking at these two top priorities in a different way. Our next Project Elevate convening is September fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth. That's everyone coming together that will be led by the state, we are participating virtually in that. But weekly, we have Project Elevate meetings at the LEA admin level. And the discussion has been ensuring that that same information can be pushed out to school. Or to our schools in particular.
Right.
Sure that there's the same level of support given to them. Because there's so much going on right now that we really need to be careful in avoiding burnout and stress. And all the other things, but by truly bringing it back to this is what we need to prioritize. This is what we need to look at and this is why we need to look at that differently. It will just ground us and center us to stay focused on that and more.
And then one, just one follow-up as well, and it has, it has to do with really the core of this whole thing is, is continue focus on BT, Avid. UDL and, and where we, the additional thing that that will really move us, and we've talked about this before. It's just the fact that consistencies of PLCs, top to bottom. And so I'm, I know that has been conversation with, with all the teams and with all the buildings and those kind of things. But if we can just keep it, and I say simple, please forgive me for saying that. But it to that, to that simple term is make, make sure our PLCs are the four questions drive our PLCs. And that, that will keep everybody focused and I can't even begin to appreciate the, the. And I, I talked about living in chaos a lot and I like chaos because somewhere you find that organizational structure. And that's kind of what you have to find, you find that eye of the storm. And all around you is the cyclone. And so those things should bring a stability to us, hopefully. Understanding again, the fact that everyone feels this pressure in this new environment. And so the sensitivity we have to have to each other. That, that's a really good place to really get that out too. And it's at the PLCs, just to really work with each other and look around the table, look around your screen rather. And see who, who needs to have someone reach out to them and say, hey, you're all right, let's go, let's keep it going and, and. Because everybody's learning along with everybody else.
Yes, I took it back, the slide that I reverted back.
Right.
Again, is this because in my mind, this also really nicely talks about our two big rocks in a different way. The third bullet, you had said, how do we do that and not make it overwhelming? So I think of the third bullet point, we need to simplify the complex array of new processes, procedures and platforms. Necessary to operate a flexible school district. When we think about our instructional framework and the systems that live within there. That improves the accessibility of differentiated instruction and support services. And finally, that first bullet, if we're really mindful about data and looking at data more effectively. That's how we identify student needs and can improve upon that. So I can't tell you how often I honestly pull this slide up. Just to kind of remind myself of, these are the three important things. This is what we need to focus on and it is, it's written around these two big rocks.
Right. I appreciate that and don't want ever here around here anymore, the data is being used as a hammer. But it's being used as a tool to help pave the way. And, and that's really the only reason that needs to be there and because we, we continue to talk about formative assessment, formative assessment, formative assessment. You can't do formative assessment without just looking at your data straight out, being honest with one another. And then just saying, hey, this is what I, this is where I missed and this is what I got to correct. Seeing some really good PLCs that do that really well and seeing some of the classrooms that they represent be successful that way. So, well, I really appreciate that, once again, just bringing that to the forefront and anyway, those are my comments. Thank you very much, Jeannie. Anybody else?
Mr. President, this is a, an overview of the, the process that we're going through. And as Jeannie talked about, we have the, the, the district integrated action plan. And underneath that is the school's integrated action plan. So as we move forward, this is what drives our systemic change. And we've, you've probably had other ways of doing this in the past. But this is the way that is provided to us and also there's funding attached to it from the state. So it helps us be even more positive in moving forward. So as we move forward, what I'd like to do in the next study session is have us talk about the district in integrated action plan. And then as we go across time, have each school report on their school integrated action plan. So that you can see all the things that we're doing to maintain that focus on student achievement. And in the greater scheme of things, so this, this is what drives everything that we do and move forward. Jeannie, you've got, I believe you, you received three grants related to this program. You talked about the CSIs, but there was a couple of other grants you had in there too, or was that the CSIs?
I spoke specifically about Manson Mesa's progress, just because they've been longer in the system and found success with that. Page Middle School also received a grant this year through CSI in the tune of around sixty thousand dollars. So that was the second, there was two CSI grants for that. And then again, systemic leadership, we're in year two of that. The bulk of that grant itself, and that's from a Title One state set aside, that's not our current title or our local Title One funds. That support that, that's from the state level. That's a fair amount of money within that grant. The highest expense within there is the travel costs associated with that. However, with the situation we're in now, those trainings, at least right now, will be virtual in nature. And we're just awaiting the second part of that of, of what that might look like in the future.
Thank you.
Great. Board members, anything else you'd like to mention or?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Jeannie on the information that she's collecting and putting it together. Looking at the application format, I do understand the state has given. The liberty of each of the districts to collect and to implement their creativity on what we have. I think we have a tremendous program here. And it's just putting a puzzle together and putting them in the right places. We have all the information on where we're going. And how we're going to get there, just a comment, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCary. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Wood, as usual, thanks a lot and keep, keep us focused here, right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item C, budget presentation, Ms. Vindi Warahande.
Hi, Vindi. Hi, Governing Board President, Mr. Candelaria, members of the board, Mr. Wallen Superintendent. And I'm going to share my screen with you here. Today, we're going to be looking at. Our contingency funds. So I thought it would be best if we clarify terminology and have a common understanding of our two common terms. Contingency and budget balance carry forward. What is the contingency? These funds are set aside for special circumstances apart. From the monies we use for day-to-day expenditures. And these, it's important to know, know that they're one-time only resources. Once depleted, there is no continuing revenue source to replenish, replenish them. So for, for example, today, we're in special circumstances like where, when we have a lot of COVID-related expenses. That we have and also the plan closing and the loss of revenue there are special circumstances. For this budget year. So your contingency fund will help usually is set aside to help through these type of special unexpected circumstances. So if you look at what a budget balance carry forward is. You'll see that is that's the amount of budget capacity that is unexpended in the prior fiscal year. And becomes part of the current year budget capacity. So any questions for me here about terminology? Yes, not if we then move forward. I had put together here. What our Impact Aid voucher history looks like, because Impact Aid is your, has been your. One of your unique funds and also a contingency fund. So here you'll see the, I've highlighted that. These lines which shows you, these were extra dollars that we received. That we haven't budgeted for in that certain fiscal year. Say in fiscal year fifteen, twenty fifteen, we received about five point two million dollars. In revenue. Right here, you'll see that this was all extra money, the five point two million dollars. They were for, they, we received them in fiscal year fifteen mainly. But they were for fiscal year twelve, thirteen, fourteen and so forth. These were not expected. What we expected was is the extra is what I put, this was really extra money. Then that should have been your true contingency, five point two million dollars. So if we move on to the next slide, I put together snapshot of Impact Aid Fund and the what-if scenario. In the first screenshot here, you'll see the snapshot of what went, what we've received. As revenue and what were our expenses were for the last nine years. And this in fiscal year twenty-one, it's a projection for right now. So as you see, you remained and you were able to maintain three point nine million dollars in contingency. But I put also put the what-if scenario for you to look at, because these are one-time only money. If you keep continuing the, the way with the expense trends we are on today, you will be on the red. We've shared this with me, I'm. We've shared this with, I've shared this with Mr. Wallen and he's close to looked at this. And uh, we are in a, we're in a good understanding that we don't want us to get, go towards the red here. Like in, like I've shown in this what-if scenario, we want us to um, get together, look at every expense that goes through. He's really good about doing that and uh, really rein in and cut down our uh, extra expenses. Of course, we have COVID-related expenses that's out there that we had no control over, but we are trying, like Ms. Wood had uh, said, we are trying our best to um, go out for these grants and hopefully uh, receive some funds. So uh, we can enjoy entry some of these expenses out of impact aid into those grant funds. So um, that, oh, so, and also I wanted to highlight here and got on the same, get on the same page with you, like when, when I was presenting my budget, uh, proposed budget, our proposed budget in June, when you asked me, so we've always had this contingency, so we should still have this. Yes, you do, but I couldn't continue, couldn't mislead you by saying, yes, we're in a good place. Because I knew, even though I hadn't done the research and the proper numbers were not put together in June, we, I knew we were going towards the red. So this was, I'm, I'm very thankful for the questions, uh, especially Ms. Kidman had, and today I was able to put this together for you. And um, then I also have, since then, we found out we have other contingency funds. We've always known that we had our Fund 958, our IGA fund. And now you know, we are um, at uh, $300,000 approximately in that uh, fund, even though we started with about 1.1 million dollars. Uh, now today we've depleted because we've had other expenses that went through uh, that um, fund. So, but Mr. Wallen is doing good, uh, holding on to this uh, $300,000. And prepaid insurance has also been our, one of our strategies. We, we were, we have been able to prepay um, every year. And if you um, see in the, in here, it's important to note in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, there was not a prepayment made, unfortunately. But right now we're back on track to do that. And then uh, if you look at our tip savings uh, fund, this is a um, another contingency fund that we found out that we have, we maintain at, uh, with the trust. It's called the Trust Investment Pool Savings Account. And we have about $454,000 in there. All right. Any questions for me? That's about it for today.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna be uh, I'll make sure that I understand because sometimes you throw me off the bus here.
I'm sorry.
So, no, 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 it's not your fault at all. Um, I, I played football, so you know, my, my head is so if I look at everything at this point, we can say our contingency funds in total uh, without all the what ifs, but the, the real, the reality of it is we have two, about 2.6 million, correct?
Correct.
All right. So that's real.
That's real.
All right. That's not Walt Disney World Fantasyland or nothing. Okay. All right. Good. No, I, no, you did really good. See, if I can understand it, you've done really well. All right. No, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
If I may?
Yep.
So what's our carryover right now from last year? I know you showed us that, but could you just remind us from um, what the carryover was from last budget year?
For impact aid?
Um, no, last, on one of the presentations before you told us what the carryover was.
For a maintenance operation fund?
Um, I can't, well, there should be several carryovers, right?
Yes. So for maintenance operation fund, uh, the, this Monday, when we, with the one and I looked at it's um, $2 million of a carry forward. And here I have for impact aid, it looks um, it is 3.9 million dollars. And so, but I gotta tell you, this presentation, these numbers I put together um, end of June, right after our conversation. So these numbers, if there were other expenses that went through, maybe um, this 3.9 million would be less right now. So I apologize, but when I do my annual financial, our annual financial report uh, in the next board meeting, that's all right, in October, uh, you will see our actual carryforward uh, dollars. Yes.
Okay, I would like to put an um, on an um, agenda item that we have a discussion on where we think our total contingency funds and carryovers should be from year to year, so we can remain a healthy financial school district.
All right. Is that it, Ms. Kidman?
Yeah, I just wanna know, I just like to make sure that we have a, like a five-year plan or something on how to maintain our contingencies, um, what the exceptions are for dipping in contingency funds and what kind of carryover we'd like to see from year to year. And not necessarily specific, some specific amounts, but maybe percentages. So that we can all agree, you know, this is a healthy financial operation. And so we don't have big surprises and we don't um, so we, because I really worry about our fiscal future, financial future right now because of, you know, first I was worried because the plant left, but now we have a double whammy and we need to make sure that uh, Paige Unified stays fiscally responsible and that we can always pay all our bills and that we can be healthy no matter what's thrown at us.
That's the million-dollar statement right there. Super Net Wallen.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you. Thank you, Vindi, for this presentation. Ms. Kidman, you're right on target, uh, but I want you to go back and remember when you're looking at an impact aid contingency, the reason that gets created is because, and it's probably going to happen again this year, I'm still uh, running as the executive director of the Arizona State Impact Aid Association. Uh, Congress hasn't until October 1st to pass a budget. Uh, we've submitted our 2020 impact aid application. And now we're working on our 2021 impact aid application. And this is going to be really critical this year. Uh, there is no NAFAS conference and I know Paige has participated the last three years. This year is going to be virtual, which means all of us can participate. And not only is it virtual, but there is no cost to it. And so one of the things, as we get closer to that, uh, we need to begin to look at how we can deploy ourselves, because remember on that Tuesday of the, of the NAFAS conference, that's when all of us go to the Hill, all 700 of school districts that are attending and go door to door to our congressman. And you look at all of the competing pieces that are going into place this year. While the budget, you know, we don't, we don't hear anything about it, but there is a broad budget process going on. The Congress is appropriating money. They have 12 buckets they have to fill to create the budget. But remember, they've also created unusual circumstances with the COVID care money and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we are pushing two major pieces with impact aid. One is an increased $50 million in the budgeting. And two is a billion-dollar infrastructure bill that there's two different laws out there that are sponsored by two different senators and congressmen to put money at this time into infrastructure for uh, impact aid school districts, so which we would be one because of that. But it takes us to make that come alive. It's, it's something we have to do by action. So it means we have to reach out to our congressional delegations and really push them to maintain that because impact aid is going to compete against the budget deficit. It's going to compete against all the other issues related to COVID-19. The, the, the demand right now for increased support for our citizens by going back to that $600 uh, unemployment check and those kinds of things. All those pieces come into place right now. I, I, if I had, if I didn't have white hair, I would say I'm gonna get white hair over this. Right now I feel like the, the little Dutch boy who's got his finger in the dyke because I am literally examining every expense that we're doing to say, is that really necessary right now in this virtual environment? Can we do something to cause us to maintain that? And we have, as you know, huge capital needs uh, to look at and how we're going to project and move forward on that. But it's really important to know exactly what you're talking about. I, I didn't know about these other funds that uh, Vindi has talked about. And I mean, I know about them now before she presented it because we've been talking about them. But uh, those are, those are um, icing on the cake that we're, I'm glad we have to put forward with that we didn't have before. Uh, because that helps us put things together uh, today. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes in more detail. We participated in webinars on how to capitalize on the funding that's available for us for the COVID-19. And I'll talk about that in just a few minutes, but it's so important that we budget, as you said, strategically and, and we look at positions in relation to attendance and those kinds of things. So that again is really critical in maintaining us to be a sovereign, solvent organization. Uh, and it's, it's, well, like I said, if I didn't have white hair, I'd sure have white hair by the time this is finished as we move forward, because this is a real challenge. And you know, with what's happening with everything and where we're going to end up going and stuff. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add again, my thanks, Vindi and Ms. Kidman for keeping that in the forefront because you're exactly correct. Uh, we, we feel like we've got a little bit bailout money from COVID and various other things like that. However, everyone knows what condition the states are in and there are, everyone's going to be scrambling in terms of budgets. And education uh, has not normally been the, the one that wags the dog. And so we're gonna have to be very diligent with it. So thank you very much for that. Uh, anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, Vindi, great job. Thank you so much for putting that together for us. All right, going on to our next item, item number D, I believe. Uh, that's going to be Mr. Rivers and the AIA Declaration Discussion. Mr. Rivers, welcome.
All right, here we go. Good evening, Mr. Candelaria, Superintendent Wallen, board members and Ms. Hoffman. I was asked to come just to have a brief discussion in regards to the new form in which AIA has asked our school district to sign and submit by September uh, 1st. And it's a declaration regarding membership in the Arizona Interscholastic Association Incorporated. And it reads, undersigned, are authorized and responsible representatives for the following AIA member school, Page High School. They understand and agree as consideration of AIA membership that they will conduct the school's AIA interscholastic programs in accordance with an adherence to the AIA constitution, bylaws, policies and procedures and the decisions of the AIA Executive Board, signatures by governing board slash superintendent, the principal and the athletic director. Uh, I was asked to present that because it is a brand new form that is being presented uh, to the school district for signatures. Uh, so I'll give you a brief history of it, the reasoning why. Recently, we had uh, three schools sue the Arizona Interscholastic Association because of their placement uh, in the football program after a two-year process of developing matrix uh, and evaluating over a three-year program, three-year period of competition, a variety of things went into it, a lot smarter people went into it than I, than I am and, and using a lot of math and matrix and, and different things like that, formulas similar to what AZPreps and MAX Preps use uh, for their rating scales. And so after that, there were three schools placed in a higher division. They sued the AIA and it cost the AIA approximately $100,000. Uh, the AIA felt it necessary to provide something like this, just basically saying you're part of this association, our expectations are for you to follow the rules and to follow the regulations and the bylaws that have been put forth. Uh, if there are issues, then there are certainly ways to resolve them, but uh, taken to court is probably not the first option. I won't speak to what schools they are. The AIA did win uh, the case. And then that, that cost was then passed on to their uh, member schools uh, for us to pay uh, approximately about $600 to $700 per school uh, for a total of almost $100,000. But fortunately, we did have a reserve set aside for legal fees. Unfortunately, it just didn't cover the whole thing. Is there any questions? Uh, it, it doesn't need board approval. Um, it can certainly receive board approval. Uh, it was meant to be a discussion item. The superintendent's authorized to sign it. Also, Mr. Candelaria, as a representative of the board, you are certainly um, uh, able to sign that as well. And after those signatures, if approved, then we'll have Ms. Martin and myself sign that as well and send it on.
Uh, Mr. President? So, Mr. Rivers, what, what this document is saying is we're agreeing not to sue the AIA when we disagree with them?
No, not at all. It's just basically saying that we're willing to follow the decisions of the AIA and to pursue other options before going and suing. Uh, there was no discussion. It was basically a, a lawsuit that was delivered to the AIA with no preliminary conversations ahead of time. I have a meeting with AIA tomorrow morning, actually, uh, and some other athletic directors to discuss some other information, but I can get any clarification you need to tomorrow from David Hines.
No, it's just when I had brown hair, I have uh, several times crossed the AIA. Uh, because of their practices that did not help. Uh, actually, when I was at Page, I was kind of at odds with the AIA a little bit. Luckily, I had Chuck Howell, who was a real uh, statesman and, and uh, kind of helped between us, but they were, there was practices at that time that we did not believe were in the best interest of students. And um, the AIA is, has, you know, has done some interesting things over time. Of course, there's new leadership. And of course, if you participate in the legislative council, then obviously you can have real input into what's happening um, and that kind of stuff. So that's why I was curious as to, as to where that is.
And I'll have that opportunity to be a part of the legislative council next year.
Oh, great. Okay.
I'm actually uh, the uh, vice president for the 3A conference and will be the conference 3A president next year. Uh, that was recently uh, voted on and approved. And two years ago, I was part of the executive council as well as a 3A uh, North representative. So I am well aware and we've been able to push some great things through, especially for our 3A students. Yes, I, I am aware there are times, in fact, uh, that we are at odds and we've gone to bat for our students. One of them was last year uh, with the basketball tournament, the way that some of the things were going on and we forced some good change. Uh, I'm also aware that uh, there's a lot of really good things that the AIA does uh, that um, they do the best they can to protect their governing body and, and it's also up to the membership to make those changes and force those changes uh, when applicable. And that's part of the reason that we're meeting tomorrow morning to have that discussion. I really recently had a meeting with the AIA uh, leadership, David Hines and Joe Paddock, who are the executive and vice executive down at AIA. And we've had some good uh, dialogue and discussion about salvaging our athletic programs, seasons, all three of the seasons moving forward. And tomorrow will be some continued discussion and some continued plans of how that we'll be able to do that. Any other questions? I noticed, Ms. Kidman. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I do have a question. So when we agreed to follow all their rules, um, I, it's my understanding that they now decided that um, a lot of the sports are gonna go forward, yet we as a board canceled our seasons. Are we then at odds with them?
No, ma'am, we're not. We had a, a great discussion about a week and a half ago with the AIA. And then it went to the executive board. And what we did is there's about 17 to 20 schools that are in the northeastern part of the state. And then there's also other couple of schools that are involved as well that presented a plan to the AIA to allow us to start planning for an exemption for the year, so that our student athletes uh, and also those who are in activities would get the opportunity to still have a season. And they, they gave us preliminary okay to move forward. The leadership and the AIA and the executive board as well uh, gave us the uh, the okay to develop that plan further. And that plan would be to shorten our three seasons, move them to a later date. That would accommodate uh, our students returning back to school, uh, putting a plan in place that That would accommodate, uh, our students returning back to school, uh, putting a plan in place that would ensure the safety of our community, uh, limit travel, limit overnight stays to really none at all. And then also limit, uh, what's, or excuse me, address what a postseason would look like with those schools involved. I don't want to speak too much to it. So, because it's still in development. But yes, they've been very open. Uh, we had a very candid discussion. It lasted about three hours. Uh, quite a bit of information was shared and experiences shared in regards to what's going on in our communities. The significant impact that, uh, COVID-19 has had on our families, the losses that they've had. Uh, but also a lot of the good things that are taking place and we had the opportunity. Uh, there were seventeen schools, uh, specifically a part of this plan. And there are additional eight or nine schools that also were in attendance because they're on the fence. And they're trying to make a decision whether or not to come back. And there's a real good possibility that they will not. And so that plan, uh, is in a nutshell, reduced length of seasons. Instead of having the normal twelve to fourteen weeks, it would be an eight to ten week season. Uh, reduced games, reduced travel. Uh, we're also aware that our budgets are going to be smaller because there may not be crowds. And so we're looking at all of those things over the next month, uh, to return and discuss that with the leadership and then also the Executive Board as well. I know I'm we're off tangent a little bit, but just so you can know what's going on and, and our community can understand that we are doing everything for our students to be able to salvage, uh, a season for them for all three seasons. Even though we've canceled fall as of what it looks like now. Instead of fall football, we could have some things like spring football or spring volleyball or something to that effect. Um, depending on what the plan looks like.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions regarding either, uh, the plan moving forward or this specific document?
Okay, Mr. Rivers, thank you very much. I appreciate that and, uh, go get them, right? That's a tough group. Thank you very much. All right, um, next item, discussion extracurricular fees for non-PSD students participating in PST activities. Vindi, we're, we're now.
Mr. President and Governing Board Members, Superintendent Wallen. I wanted to share with you to open up the discussion, I wanted to share with you the dollar amounts we charge per class, per semester at the high school and the middle school level. So at the high school, we charge for, um, extracurricular activities and also, um, for our subjects, if a homeschool student or tuition, uh, student comes in, we charge four hundred and sixteen dollars ninety cents at the high school level. And at the middle school, um, level this year, we have four hundred and ninety-nine dollars twenty-seven cents. So this is pretty close in the alignment. Ms. Kidman was asking for, um, us to charge about five hundred dollars, uh, per student who's going to participate in athletics, um, type sport. So, um, that's all I have for you on the dollar amount.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Kidman, you asked about that and are you, do you have any questions or any for anything for Vindi?
Yes. No. Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I think, I think we've had a misunderstanding here. Um, I'm aware of those amounts. Those are the amounts that we then decided to charge for, um, non-district students to play in sports. My concern is that we right now do not have, um, a plan on what to charge our students that do not participate in AIA events such as, um, WGI, for example, musical theater and so forth. And I just want to make sure that we're fair to all our students and that we come up with a plan on how to charge non-students for those activities as well. I don't want any loopholes, basically.
Um, Superintendent Wallen, uh, you'll have to unmute.
You're talking about extracurricular activities like clubs, uh, arts and that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, like for example, I think WGI is not a part of AIA anymore. And, um, or band or what I'm, I might have some of these confused or musical theater. Um, so I want to make sure that we do not say, well, you know, you want to play football or basketball. We're charging you five hundred dollars to participate. But then here we are with musical theater or something. Oh, you're not a student, but you just paid fifty dollars now. It has to be equal. Um, and it has to be fair and I don't want a loophole there. So I would like us to come up with something where we cover those non-AIA, um, activities that students have, might want to put, non-students, non-PSD students might want to participate in.
Okay, yeah, we can have that. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate that. Any other comments, board members? Okay, uh, next item, one, one for us. It's, uh, Board Operating Norms and Protocols. And I think, uh, Mrs. Fowler, uh, had this put on the, um, study session. I also did, but Ms. Fowler, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I know now that we're doing things a little bit different as far as utilizing Zoom to continue to utilize the operating norms and protocols when we're on, our, actually, when we're attending our board meetings and study sessions. So just remember, remembering to be professional.
Okay. What I'd like to do, just real quickly, everybody's got their, um, norms and protocols in front of them. And like I said, we, we've talked about this off and on. And, um, I might, uh, you feel free to highlight any of these that is, that, that you might, uh, want to speak about. I'll highlight a couple of them. Uh, of course, we, we want to continue to be centered as a board. Uh, and, uh, on this, the fact that children's needs, interests come first and, uh, and, and our student achievement. And, uh, one thing that, uh, Superintendent Wallen did before he was superintendent, we asked him to, to do a audit of the board. And he rightly pointed out that when you start looking at the, the, our agenda items on work, study sessions or various things like that, that there was, uh, not necessarily links to student achievement and, and the things that we, uh, choose to discuss. And so I would want us to keep focused in that area, uh, as well. And I'm talking to myself and, and, uh, so just continue to, in, in our actions and the things that we have conversation about is to, to keep that in mind always. Um, and certainly when you're talking budgets and all those, that's direct impact of what our kids need and, uh, performance. I'm, I really appreciate what Ms. Wood brings to that. And we want to continue to have that as a, maybe as a standard. Whenever there's data that we can have a conversation about or some great things that are going on with regard to the PLCs or all those kinds of things, we want to highlight and focus. This next one, don't spring surprises. Uh, you know, I think we're, we're all fairly good about that. Uh, but, um, certainly we want to keep that in mount, in mind. That's, that's one of the, the benefits of having a superintendent that says, hey, if you have any questions, give me a call ahead of time. Uh, and if you have questions of anyone that's doing any kind of presentations, if you look at the material ahead of time and you say, oh, man, I'm going to have a question on that, it's really nice to be able to have the conversation with someone and so that they can be ready with a good response. Uh, one thing I do appreciate about what our board has done is that we, every other meeting is a work-study session. So we can gather information much like we're doing tonight, uh, before we consider action items. So I think that that's, that's an important one to, to, uh, to, um, keep in mind as, as much as possible. Uh, don't be surprised by an agenda item when you get here. So, uh, maybe the, the, the communication between staff and board. Um, and, uh, what it'll do is bring this up with the next one because chain of command is really, really important. And, uh, because we're board members, we get, we, uh, we have our ears open to the community, uh, staff, everybody else. And, uh, we just always have to be reminded of the fact that we only function as a board in here. And we really cannot, um, be everybody's problem solver with various things. And so if anyone comes to us, uh, your first refer is have you gone through your chain of command to get that resolved? And, uh, there's always a, uh, kind of a norm and that's to try to resolve thing at the lowest possible level. But then also you have avenue if it doesn't get resolved. And so that's kind of the presentation that we have to have for folks. There's the chain of command. Uh, the board is not necess, we don't do the day-to-day. We don't do the, we don't, um, uh, deal with any kind of, uh, employee, uh, issues management until it's come to us through the superintendent. And so, uh, anyway, just want to mention that, um, again, I think we're all understand the collective, collective decision-making process and the fact that once a decision's made by the board, that's a decision and we support that, uh, no matter what my personal feeling is about certain things. The governance role, eh, man, you guys serve such an important role. And, and what I love about our board is the fact that there's such a diversity on the board. And everyone hears from a different part of the community and you bring that to the table. And so that, that's a real strength and I want us to continue to build on that strength. Self-assessment evaluation, I think we're getting better and better at that. And so we'll continue that. And, uh, I know I've been talking to Superintendent Wallen about goals this year. Uh, and we haven't really, uh, set that out at this point in time. Uh, a lot of things going on, but, uh, everyone's goals. At, at Page Unified School District, stat, every bit of staff, every teaching staff, the administrative staff and the board. Uh, get our girl, goal circled around one thing and that is student achievement. CEO input, uh, Superintendent Wallen makes himself available all the time. And I think everyone's good about, uh, giving him a call, knocking on his door. Um, and so let's, let's keep that up too. Uh, board acts only as a body. Uh, meeting protocols, I think we've done fairly well. I'll have to apologize for this one, but this was a long agenda. We try to keep it a little bit shorter than this. I, and, uh, we're going past the two-hour mark. It's the first time we've done this in a long, long time. And I'm wasting a lot of your time here now, Ray says, why doesn't he get through this? I will. Oh, we're almost done. Avoid marathon board meetings. Oh, wait a minute. We're talking about that. Uh, efficient decision-making and that just has to go with asking the questions before, uh, having, uh, really us, us bringing the things that are important to talk about in, in terms of decisions we have coming up, bring that to the work-study sessions and, and, uh, to get all the, the people with the information in front of us. So that's, um, that's, uh, really a, a good one. Uh, speak to agenda issues, uh, and we, I think we do really well at that. And we try to stick with the agenda and appreciate all you guys really, uh, being mindful of that, uh, because that's really, really important. And again, we're also, I think, very mindful of what exec, executive sessions are for. Uh, and we don't overuse them. A lot of boards I know, and I've heard just horrible stories. Executive sessions used just to talk about people and not including the superintendent or, uh, anyway. I've heard just nightmare stories from, uh, some, some boards. So I, again, I really appreciate the board we have. And, uh, anyway, anybody have anything they want to speak to specifically?
Again, I mean, this, I appreciate that you went over the board operation norms and protocols. Again, I mean, we're also bringing in Superintendent Wallen. So this is just to refresh everyone's memory as well. And the other thing I know that's kind of different is, you know, being on Zoom, I like for us to continue to keep, you know, being professional and just making things, um, just as normal as we were there in the governing board room and just staying off of our phones and, you know, just being respectful in that way.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, we're good. The last item, uh, on our agenda is, uh, COVID school updates. Superintendent Wallen.
Thank you. Um, gosh, uh, this is a, a big deal. And it's changing the landscape of education that, that Jeannie spoke about. The virtual learning is now here. It's real. And I want to thank the board for allowing us to bring in the teachers to do the continuous learning plan in, uh, May and June, uh, July, allowing us to bring in the teachers to work on virtual learning. Uh, in July, that created, uh, experts in our staff that now are working with other people and, and adjusting, uh, the school by four days so that all the staff then could be working with those people in relation to what virtual learning looked like. And Ryan, are you still here? Um, I'd ask Ryan to.
Yes, it's a little past my bedtime, but.
I'm sorry that would take you so long, but it's best to hear about what's really happening at the teacher level in terms of virtual learning. And Ryan is one of the, one of those teachers that was involved in that and is one of the superstars that is moving forward with this virtual learning. So he's going to talk just a little bit about that.
Yes. Good evening, guys. Thank you, Mr. Juan and, uh, people of the board, President Candelaria. Thank you guys for, for having me here tonight. Um, Mr. Juan kind of just asked me to tell you guys kind of my story, how I've got to where I am right now. And then I'm happy to honestly answer some questions. I know that I'm sure you guys are curious as to how things are going. I have about this many things that I could talk about. So if you, if you want to kind of guide me in some of your questions, um, I, I think that might be best. Um, I guess kind of to start, this is my fifth year teaching here. Um, this is my first job right, like, right out of college. I don't know if you can tell, but, uh, the fifth year at Desert View. Um, I also run the soccer and tennis program at the high school. Um, so I'm pretty involved throughout the district and it's been great to do that. Um, I won a, uh, I guess one got a grant from IEC about two years ago, um, for a class set of Chromebooks. Um, and I had a class of third graders at the time, or at the end of the year, they were third graders and then the beginning of the year, fourth grade. Um, so I guess my level of comfort with Chromebooks and the Google Suite app applications, um, is pretty high. I've been using it for a long time. Um, if you were to walk into my classroom a year ago, all of my kids were using all of the stuff that all of our kids have to use now. Um, so I've had some time to kind of get comfortable with that, learn the ins and outs, learn the ways of differentiating some of that instruction through those resources. Um, so it was great when, you know, my print, my building principal, Mary Saw, came to me before school started and asked me if I would take on a remote learning mentor role. Um, kind of helping all the other teachers adjust to the new platform that we're in, the new world that we're in. Um, I'm also mentoring a, a new teacher and at our new teacher induction, they asked us what one thing we're excited about this year. And, you know, I think all of us in education, we've, we've really wanted education to change for a long time. Um, it's unfortunate that a pandemic had to be the reason why things are changing. Um, but I think at the same time, just, just being at school and, you know, just looking at all these different things, it's exciting. You know, the education world is changing. It's changing quick. And I, I, I do think it's exciting because, you know, the ways that we're hitting our kids where they need, um, is going to be, is a lot easier. Takes time to get there, but it's a lot easier. It's a lot more efficient. Um, and I'm happy to be, um, happy to be a part of that. So I'm excited for the changes that are coming. Um, like I said, um, I don't know what you guys know about what we're doing. I'm, I, like I said, I have about this many things I feel like I could talk about. If there's specific questions, um, I'm happy to answer them, kind of guide us a little bit. I know we're, we're pushing the time limit, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have about what we're, what we're doing.
Anybody?
Well, my question is, how do you get the kids to open up their Chromebook and get to your class?
Yeah. So, um, you know, we're using Google software. We do not use Zoom, so we use Google Meet. Um, it's actually going to be changing a lot, a lot of the things that we've been pushing for and different things that we're adding to Google Meets, uh, Google is updating, um, a lot as most people are shifting to this virtual learning platform. Um, so we use Google Meets to meet with our kids every day. Um, and you know, I think I can speak on behalf of most of the teachers, um, in our whole school district. We were pretty nervous a few weeks ago as to how things were going to go. Um, but I've been pleasantly surprised, to be honest with you guys, about how we're getting it done. We're getting a, a, talking about attendance, a huge number of our kids are showing up every day, which is awesome. You know, with connectivity issues and internet access, we knew that that was going to be a challenge. Um, but it's been awesome to see, you know, I pop into these different classrooms every day and there's just as many kids on the Google Meets call as there would be in an actual classroom, um, which is really encouraging and really exciting. So, um, you know, it's, it's a big transition. You know, we have teachers in our district that have been teaching for a really long time and doing things a certain way for a really long time. And there's almost a point in this school year where everyone's a new teacher. And that can be exciting as, as we go through with PLC processes and PLC norms, answering those four questions, you know. We're, we're collaborating and we're, we're really having to, to start from scratch. But as a team, if you do that correctly, it, it could be done. But as a team, if you do that correctly, it, it could be done really efficiently and really well. Um, so it's been exciting to see that.
Thank you. That, that's awesome. That's, 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 that's the COVID nineteen report. That's what it's about is that virtual learning. That changing landscape that we're all facing every day. And it's, it's been most difficult for teachers in adjusting to do that as we move forward. But with that, you know, uh, every day I'm in some kind of webinar. Today I was with the Navo Nation in a webinar related to COVID nineteen. Uh, we now are in a weekly conference with the president's office and uh, the Navo Division of Education about the latest numbers. And where we are tomorrow, I'll be, tomorrow or Thursday, I'll be in conference uh, with the county school superintendent and the other superintendents in our county related to where we are. The benchmarks, you remember, we've talked about before. Uh, there are three of them and we have two of them that are green. The one is still red. So that's still out there to be looked at and, and see where we are. And I'd asked uh, President Candelaria to call another meeting of the CDC soon. To begin to get more serious about talking about what reopening looks like as our benchmarks gets better and better. Uh, the Navo Nation benchmarks are much better. Looking forward with that. Uh, right now, today we had two thousand four hundred and eleven students enrolled. Preschool thirty-seven, Lakeview four twelve, Desert View four ninety-three, middle school, um, five fifty-six, high school eight sixty-two. And, but we've had also almost three hundred kids withdraw as well over the course of the summer and everything. And that's what we're looking at. What I look at is the ADM numbers and in my uh, board report, you'll see that. But basically right now, we are um, uh, down about a hundred two point eight seven seven ADM kids. And you multiply that, begin to multiply that out and see where we're looking at losing money and what we're doing today. Uh, we met with the principals. Uh, or yesterday we met with the principal, sorry, about aligning staff based on where the students are and what that's going to look like. And so we're looking at class sizes, staffing needs. Again, as I said, when I was interviewed by the board, how would I uh, attack the um, the, the fact that we may be overstaffed and that's through attrition and trying to work with people. So we're asking people to, recruiting people to move to a different position. Again, based on enrollment and that's, that's being put out there right now. Uh, the, the uh, as Ryan said, the hotspots have been um, awesome. I am totally, totally amazed at how well that has worked out. Um, and is going to continue to get better. We, we've given out three hundred and fifty hotspots. It's about sixty thousand dollars. We just received another hundred and fifty to move forward. And, and, and you, when you think of hotspots, you think about one family, one hotspot. Not necessarily. If you have six kids, we might have to give you two hotspots or three hotspots, depending on where you are. I want to say Monday I was with the um, Butterway, Butterway Gap chapter. Talked to them for two hours about where we are with learning and the, and everything. And the, the general consensus out there as I go to di- different chapter meetings and, and talk to people is um, we need to continue virtual learning longer. We need to continue that. And I think we need to look at that. We um, have the, the onsite support as a result of the virtual learning or of the COVID nineteen. And uh, we had uh, started out with forty-seven kids registered and first few days we had fifteen. Uh, now we have eighty-four kids registered and we're up to about forty-seven a day. And then thank to Mr. Rivers and Mr. Anderson for their putting that together. We actually have a couple of school districts coming to look at our support onsite. We are the only ones around us that is having the onsite support. Everyone else got waivers and is backed out of it, but we're, we're moving forward with that. So they're coming to look at our setup and what we're doing for kids. As, as Ryan spoke about briefly, the special ed kids, uh, special needs kids are being uh, dealt with through differentiation and learning about how that, what that looks like and how that works in the classroom and that kind of stuff. So we're looking at those pieces. Um, uh, I can't uh, one of the things I was asked to say something about was effectiveness of instruction. I can't speak to that yet because in our plan, the first two weeks was getting kids used to being with the computers. Getting the teachers used to being with the kids, setting routines, setting interactions. How do you, how do you work together with those kinds of things? And so really I'm expecting this Friday to see the first, uh, what I call CFA common formative from the BT program, seeing those scores log up as we move forward with that. Uh, I know Desert View was, is working toward their, beginning their uh, benchmarking, their first benchmark and, and those kinds of things. But the COVID nineteen is continuing to be a driving force. We um, as, as Jeannie said, Jeannie, Vinnie and I were both on enter um, webinars today about phases to recovery. And how that's going to work in terms of funding. And so we have a much better, more clear definition of what the FEMA money is going to look like, what the enrollment stabilization grant is going to look like, which is supposed to pay uh, or support our budget because of lost attendant, uh, lost ADM. And then the ASR, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, which is a federal fund and what that can look like. And we're, we're putting together the uh, how all that is going to play out. The um, uh, enrollment stabilization application is due uh, September fourth, so in a week. So we're working hard on putting that together and putting in as much expenses as we can related to that. Uh, I believe that I'm hoping, no, hope's not a strategy. We're planning to recover as much as our technology costs as we can. All the one-on-one uh, Chromebooks, the headphones, the, the um, thumb drives, everything that we can, putting in there as well as all the uh, health services, the, the custodial cleaning. The student support, the transportation. I believe we can maybe even recover our transportation costs as related to what we're doing right now. Um, our personal protective equipment, what that's looking like and getting that. And that's, that as we go forward is evolving in the COVID nineteen uh, website in relation to uh, safety for staff and, and people. Uh, we don't have any reported COVID nineteen cases right now in our um, staff. Uh, we have a couple of people that were in quarantine as a result of someone else. Uh, but we have, and uh, we have none there. Student wise, we don't have any reported cases at this point. Uh, and again, everything changes. Today, uh, I received a um, executive order from the um, uh, governor of the state of Arizona and the director of Arizona Health Human Services. We now have to report on a uh, basically a daily basis, our interactions with the, the outbreaks of COVID nineteen. And an outbreak is considered to be two or more laboratory confirmed onset within a fourteen day period. And then we have to provide names and addresses, uh, all kinds of information to the county. Uh, practically every day in relation to that, who the students are, uh, who their parents are. And a lot of information that I'm wondering if it's, if it's um, within the FERPA requirement, but that's, that's out there. And then ADHS, Arizona Department of Health Service is going to provide us technical assistance and setting up the emergency measures. This particular executive order remains in effect for the next eighteen months. Uh, and so we're going to gear up to provide, to comply with that piece uh, in relation to that. So um, I've asked Mr. Candelaria to uh, convene the C W C, which is the Community Medical Group. Let's look at our new achieve um, COVID nineteen data on where we are. I expected a much stronger response to the onsite learning than we got, uh, although it's growing and it's continuing. Um, and I know again, when I talk to the chapters, people are just really, really, really concerned about uh, exposures and those kinds of things. The one area that I consider real critical right now is food service. Uh, we're serving about three hundred meals a day. And it's probably the majority of that, about two hundred is in town. Uh, another hundred and fifty goes out. Each bus goes out and is running their route. And we are reaching out to people in several different ways to get them to know that their breakfast and lunch is on those bus routes. And they go to a certain point, people are there. Um, I know Art rode the bus the other day and is working with the bus drivers. We need to serve about eight hundred meals to break even in food service. So one of the challenges, not only is the serving of food, but one of the challenges we're going to have as the organization is funding food service because we need to get about eighteen hundred meals in order for our um, chart wells to break even and where they are. And so we're looking again at different kinds of ways to get more and more information out there to get people to participate in that lunch program. They're not going to really participate until we're brick and mortar on the ground. That's when we're, we'll get back up to twenty, twenty-four hundred meals a day kind of thing. So those are the challenges we're facing right now is putting all that together and uh, and moving forward with the phases to recovery based on funding. Uh, but I can tell you in no uncertain terms, it's like Ryan talked about. I am so proud of the, the educational staff. Uh, you know, having been a teacher, I know how hard it is to shift. Uh, and I even have trouble doing meetings with everybody uh, and facilitating meetings with people masked and stuff. And what an adjustment that is. And it's just tremendous to see the stories, the emails across my screen telling stories about people helping people, people helping each other and kids doing that. And I am really impressed as, as Ryan said too, with the login rate. It's much higher than I had thought possible uh, in relation to that, much higher. Um, our ed support group is out there every day delivering uh, whatever is needed and working with families uh, with the hotspots or whatever they need to move that forward. So we're rolling forward. Um, and we just have the challenges to keep moving and understand that education is not going to go back the way it was. It's going to be a different world and uh, and what that's going to look like is going to evolve. And we have the opportunity to be in that involvement. We have the opportunity to guide that direction and that's what we want to do. Uh, thank you, Mr. Candelario. Thank you, Ryan, for providing that update.
Board members, any comments, questions?
I just, I just have a question.
KD.
Yeah. My question is, what did you say the enrollment was? Two thousand four hundred?
Two thousand four and eleven.
Okay. What did you say the adjusted ADM numbers were? I couldn't quite catch that.
Okay, the adjusted, the ADM number um, on the ADM A four forty-five, the number is two thousand three hundred twenty-three point five five six. Well, wait a minute, that's more kids than we have in school. Remember, it's a weighted student number. Uh, because if we get all the, uh, the uh, the adjusted ADM for um, move on when reading for special ed kids, for ELL kids and so on. So that number is what we're looking at. The one that I got today, the unofficial number is two thousand two hundred and fifty-five point one six six. As the ADM number, two thousand two hundred and fifty-five point one six six. So you can actually go through and start multiplying that times the uh, base support level, the D A A and some of those things. The next aggregation, I believe is like September eighth, uh, when all the attendance goes up. Right now, it, it goes up every day. But the aggregation date, when the state pulls it together and creates the new monthly reports is the one that we're waiting for to see what that's going to look like. Um, and that's what controls our budget. Even though you, you produce a budget, uh, that doesn't mean that's what's going to happen. It's, remember, we're on current year funding and most importantly, we're on AOL funding, which is not as predictable as the good old uh, take attendance in the classroom kind of thing. Teachers are working extremely hard. Again, I have to compliment, the teachers are just amazing because the attendance rules are so different. Um, if you have contact with that kid that day, even though he was not in your class, you can still mark him absent. If he submits work or you call him or her, uh, that kind of stuff. So we've been training and training and training uh, on the new attendance collection procedures. Because remember, with the AOI attendance collection methodology, you really usually recover only about eighty-five percent of your ADM. So our goal is to maximize that as much as we can until we become bricks and mortar. Uh, and that's where the, the uh, stabilization grant that I was talking about will come in. It'll help close that gap for one year on that respect, in that respect. Two thousand four, four hundred and eleven.
Board members, any other comments, questions?
I have one more question. That number you mentioned, the two thousand four hundred and eleven enrolled students.
Yeah, that's bodies.
Yes. Is that after our ten day drop?
Yes, the ten day drop was uh, Monday. Um, and so that is the most accurate count we have. We've actually had three kids enroll yesterday. Uh, so that's kind of where we are with it right now. A lot, several of the kids that I had gone to um, ASU prep, there was like thirty, forty kids that went there are coming back. Uh, they're finding out it's not as easy as they thought it would be. And it's not that we're easy, it's just they're more familiar and more uh, more familiar, how do I say, more familiar with our environment. With the Page School District, the Pride, all the stuff that we have. And, and they're dealing with then people who are in Phoenix, which is a whole different communication system and a whole different way. So some of those kids are coming back. I'm hoping to see that we can recover some of the charter school kids to, to come back to us. And I, I think I told
Can I just say?
Just that we, we received approval for Sage and Sand. So all we need is that C D S number and we're ready to move forward with that one as well.
I would just like to make um, a few compliments, um, if I may. Um, oh, sorry. I was one of those parents that was quite frustrated the first week of school because of, you know, uh, five kids enrolled and all the technologies been a steep learning curve. I'd like to apply for uh, you know, uh, certificate of now being a uh, Google Classroom Expert, Hall Monitor, you know, et cetera, all that kind of stuff. But um, there's, there's several things that stand out to me and that is, I mean, I have been in more classrooms than I've ever been. Um, sometimes in three classrooms simultaneously. So that's a new experience. But um, I, the one thing that I have observed is how patient the teachers are, how complimentary they are to their kids, how encouraging they are. And um, just how patient they are with everything. My experience with our teachers has been that they have been very responsive. I have never received so many um, emails from the school in my life, but they were all relevant. And um, when I have sent emails back, the response time has been wonderful. Usually within twenty-four hours, I hear something back. Um, so I just wanted to say how impressed I am um, with how well our teachers have adapted. And then another thing I've noticed at Lakeview, they kept a lot of their, I mean, at least in my son's classroom. They kept a lot of the kids together from last year. So with, you know, with the hurdle of technology, it was nice for him to see a lot of familiar faces from last year. And I know that's not always possible. But I know that there were great efforts made in that behalf. And I just, I'm just really grateful for everything our teachers have done and the staff has done. I think it's just overall really impressive.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Remember, you need to credit your board members too, because you're the ones who allowed us to spend that money to bring everybody back to set that up so that people, they could train each other and then adjust schools so that they get more training themselves. And you just set such a dynamic and start that it, that, that's, that's just powerful.
It's getting better every day, every day.
Thank you, Ms. Kidman. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention, the last two weeks I visited eleven classrooms. I read so much on the applications. So I thought, well, now let me put my walking shoes on and go to these schools. I did Page High School, um, Middle School, Desert View, Lakeview. And I still have, uh, let's see, preschool and medicine aid to do. But what I saw, I could not believe. I mean, those little people were on task. This is even the kindergartners. And I just didn't have any idea how they were going to teach this. But I tell you, the teachers are so engaged. They are just so excited in what they do. It's just, you know, sitting behind the desks, they're moving around, showing the kids different ways of teaching different items that they're doing. I was just real impressed. I was just so, so pleased. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with what um, Superintendent Wallen had to mention. Um, you mentioned food services. Um, I know that in our area, I would definitely like to see more families utilizing the food services. And I know I've gotten some encouragement to come out and get meals for our, our two ways. Um, one of the things that I've noticed is that buses are only stopping at a certain location. It is not at each bus site. So for me, that's quite a drive. So I don't really utilize the food service. But on the other hand, um, having my boys in the kitchen while I'm making brunch, that's been unique because I'm a the current time. And also, um, yesterday I was able to sit, not sit in, but listen in eavesdrop on my son's Navajo language two class, Mr. Begay. And I, I appreciate that, you know, the students are also very patient. And one of the unique things that I found is that students are helping each other as well to guiding each other and making sure that they're on task. And also if there's any trouble, you know, if the teacher's teaching, they're, they're messaging each other and able to help and guide each other. And I noticed that yesterday, the lesson plan, um, that Mr. Begay had wouldn't download to the students', um, laptops. So one of the things he mentioned right away is, hey, get a piece of paper out and this is going to be the instruction. You're going to have to turn this in and so forth. But I like that the kids, again, just the engagement of how the class instruction went yesterday and just kind of seeing things, but it was unique. Again, Navajo language and, you know, helping my son, also tutoring him with some of the words and Navajo was, was fun. And then the other thing is I forget that we have, um, those little breaks in between classes and I'm on my kids and telling, why are you not in, asking them, why are you not in class? We're on break. Oh. So that's always, I mean, that's been good. But overall, I do appreciate that our school, oh my goodness, compared to last quarter of what we went through as a district, as far as having some of the troubleshoots with, um, internet, um, also laptops, even with meals. I feel like this year, going into the beginning of the school year, we are definitely headed in the right direction. Um, listening to other school, school board, um, members from other school districts and then even having trouble with, um, internet being still an issue in some school districts. I am just pleased and happy that, um, again, Larry, we appreciate all that you have done for our students and all of our teachers, principals. I mean, everyone in our district. Thank you. I appreciate the support that we are able to give to our students and also our families out on the reservation. So I seen, um, um, a picture on Facebook earlier today where some students, this is like in Eastern Navajo Nation here, um, students sitting on cement, um, flooring outside a chapter house with parents and, you know, still having trouble trying to get into classes and just, it's just amazing. I'm, I'm just grateful that we are off to a great start. And I just hope that we continue to move forward as some of the, um, her, um, presentations that were given earlier. So thank you again and appreciate everyone's leadership. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll, I'll just double exclamation, everything the board has said about our staff and our teachers and, and I will, uh, thank the board as well, uh, for, uh, working together and listening and, uh, getting some of these things done as well. But, and, uh, Ryan, good job, buddy. And I've seen other people in your shoes that have done the same thing. And, uh, it's, it, it's paying off in spades. I've was convinced that it'd probably get us about three to four weeks or so before we smooth into something. But it's moving in a really good direction. I mean, it's tough. There's no doubt about it, but it's moving in a good direction. And I am super surprised at how many kids
Yeah.
are, have, have shown up, literally.
I think it's, it's funny to me because you'll have a kid on a concrete floor in the middle of the reservation, having better connection than we do inside of the school building.
Well, yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, that, that ain't even right. I tell you that.
At the end of the, at the end of the day, I mean, we really appreciate everything you guys are doing to help us. And honestly, at the end of the day, I think students and teachers, we were just craving learning. We were
Absolutely.
Waiting to be back at it. And
Yeah.
you know, a lot of teachers, this is not the world that they want. But at the end of the day, this is teaching and they're just happy to be back doing it. And
Yeah.
you know, they got a smile on their face and the kids are, you know, they're sitting there waving like this and they are, they are very excited to be a part of it. So.
Indeed, indeed. Again, thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent Wallen. Appreciate that. Uh, folks, we are at that point and it is time to call for an adjournment. Anyone?
We need the motion to adjourn.
Good.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, eight o'clock.
Yeah, heck, we're early.
I'm early.
We got a motion.
I second that motion.
All right. And all in favor say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Board members, thank you so much for hanging in there. And everybody else, thank you so much for being patient and great presentations tonight. Mr. Dubey, that was phenomenal. Jeannie Wood, as usual. And, uh, Vindi, thank you so much. All right. We are adjourned.